Okay, excellent. So first, we didn't get any regrets. So as I said, we have all trustees here plus Walid. So that's great. Declaration of conflicts? Anyone who wants to recuse from any discussion? Okay, perfect. So we have posted the proposed agenda on the web, so everybody should be aware of that. Any agenda bash? Okay, perfect. I think, yeah, no, I mean, we can do it tomorrow for tomorrow's agenda. So yeah, today's agenda, I think, is good. Okay, so without further ado, I would like to move to point number two on the agenda, which is the document resolutions that we have approved by e-vote since our last board meeting. And for that, I would like to get our secretary, John, to talk about that.
Thank you, Gonzalo. Under our revised rules, since these were all either approved unanimously or they were approved not unanimously, but the people who... But they're all either approved unanimously or they were approved by a majority and the people who didn't vote for them endorsed them. So we do not have to approve them again. And since everybody has seen all of these resolutions, I'm not going to read them all. I'm simply going to tell you which ones they were. There was one resolution to authorize creation of the Internet Society Foundation, which is in several sections. There was another resolution to appoint the members of the 2017-2018 nominations committee, which I had to correct, but the version you see should be the correct one. We approved the, after lengthy negotiations, the ISO PR operating procedure. And finally, we approved the PR 2018 budget. And Kevin already has the list of who voted for which and who abstained. So I think that this process continues to save us a good deal of time at meetings.
Yeah, thank you, John. And to be clear, yeah, we are just documenting so that, you know, the resolutions are captured in a minute. So the resolutions basically were enforced or are enforced as soon as we approve them when we use e-vote.
Right, and now they are minuteed so that austerity will know about them.
Exactly, that's important. Okay, thank you, John. So moving to the third point in our agenda, we are very happy because this time we have to celebrate a lot of new chapters and a lot of special interest groups. So we're going to have a resolution for welcoming them all. And let me list the, I mean, read the whole list of new chapters and new six. So we're going to be welcoming the Dominica chapter, Guyana chapter, Illinois chapter, Mumbai chapter, Namibia chapter, St. Vincent and the Grenadines chapter, US New Mexico chapter. So those are the chapters we are welcoming. And then two new special interest groups, the cybersecurity and the Internet of Things six. So we're going to pass this by acclamation. And as I said, we are very happy to have such an active community and so many new initiatives. So let me basically, I mean, please join me in passing the resolution by acclamation. Okay, thank you. So moving to number four on the agenda, we're going to have the chair of our nomination committee for this year, Olga Kabaly, to give us a quick status update. So Olga.
Thank you very much, Gonzalo. And as you have seen, we have already appointed members of the nomination committee. That's in the resolution that it's referred a few minutes ago. So far, we have already issued the call for applications for the new members of the Board of Trustees. It is, there is a text that has been published in English and I translated into Spanish. And also, the call for applications is in the ISO website. So I personally have been promoting it in our new networks in Latin America in Spanish, also in English. So we have been complying with the schedule that was agreed with that. So that for the moment, that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Olga, thanks a lot. So I'm glad that, you know, we are basically meeting the timeline and we have a good time plan. So that's excellent.
If I may comment, we, thanks to the help with Kevin, we have prepared a blog in Spanish and English. If someone else is keen to translate it into other languages or promote it into other networks, that could be also useful. Thank you.
Okay, good. Yeah, that's a good point that, yeah, anyone can basically approach Olga if you have kind of, you know, the possibility and the willingness to do that. Okay, excellent. Thank you. The next point on the agenda is point number five, which is, I mean, it has two purposes. Hans Peter, the chairman of our governance committee, will drive this point. So Hans Peter, the floor is yours.
Okay, the Governance Committee so far has accomplished one of its, at least one of its tasks, which is bringing together some guidance. It's called nomination committee guidance from the Governance Committee. It summarizes expectations to the nomination committees over a few years. It summarizes how master points and it was distributed to the board. Sometimes this week, I think, Thursday or so. And it's a guidance. It's still open for discussion. It's always open for improvement. It should be always kept as a, let's say, recommendation. It's not hard rules. Most of it are recommendations. You should look at this, you should look at that. It's not a strict ruling thing. And I think it's, it's good that the nomination committee has some freedom to really choice in it. Yes, and I propose that it's accepted by resolution. And that would be the first task. But if there is any discussion or any immediate improvements and immediate change requests, we should have time for it.
Exactly. So any comments on the document before we pass into, go into the approval of the resolution? Okay, hearing no comments, we're going to pass this resolution by voice vote. No, yeah, yeah. But we're going to use a voice vote. So yeah, somebody would like to move their... Hans Peter moves. Anyone second? Okay, Olga second.
John, shall I read it or...?
You want to read the resolution? Please go ahead.
A proposed resolution, resolution 2017 XX, approve governance committee guidance to the nominations committee. Resolved, the board of trustees approves the governance committee guidance as presented to the 2017-2018 nomination committee.
Okay, perfect. So we're going to pass this by voice vote. So I'm going to be asking who votes yes, no, and abstain, as usual. So trustees who would like to vote yes, please say yes.
Yes.
Okay, I heard Walid also voting yes. Trustees who would like to abstain, please say abstain. Trustees who would like to vote no, please say no. Okay, so the resolution passes unanimously. Okay, thank you. So Hans Peter, please move to the second point.
Thank you. Our second point is work still on the way or current work, current work in the background. That's two topics. It's summarized under board portal or board work area and e-voting. I promised last time from the governance committees that we are looking actively at three different systems and setting up a test run for this meeting. And I'm very sad, disappointed, I'm not sure what's the right word, that we didn't reach to this point. And Kevin did a lot of work and set up one of the examples after Todd's very thorough screening of the systems and writing a report of it. We selected one. Kevin set up a dummy version of information, including agenda, blah, 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 and everything. And we tested it in several runs and had to decide, I think it was last week or the week before, so it was a few days before IETF, that we found some very deep-going severe deficits in this system. And we wouldn't like to take your time or waste your time to test it because it's simply not sufficient enough for this board's requirement. And to have a little bit more positive outlook, Kevin already has identified a fourth one, which was also screened by Todd. And we will try to set it up over the next weeks. I believe perhaps you can say two words to it.
Yes, just as Hans Peter said, the first product, while it showed very well in the demonstration phase, it did not satisfy requirements when we were in the trial phase. So we've identified a second product and we're scheduled to trial that Hans Peter and I, week after next. So we hope to have a portal available for the board's use by the end of this year.
Excellent.
Any questions to it? I'm sorry, I never expected this to be so complicated and so...
Okay, so thanks for the perseverance.
The easy, these first two points. The next one is work we have in front of us or we still have not yet completed or we need some more input. The governance committee will meet later this afternoon. And before starting working on these three topics, I decided in conjunction with talking to Gonzalo that it might be useful for the committee to get some input, some straw poll, some early note or indication that the whole board is thinking in these, in those three topics. So we can decide where we can go deeper and where we can go into the whole thing. Then I would summarize those three topics in revision of the Code of Conduct for Trustees, number one. Number two, board of trustee compensation or redemption or whatever the right words are in this case. And board of trustees travel and involvement policy. These are the three things. And we have now relatively, let's say, foggy Code of Conduct for Trustees. I would like to rewrite it in a little bit more concise fashion and add some more examples, perhaps following the things we had and the recommendations already because part of it is nothing but announcement of the Code of Conduct for Trustees. The compensation thing, there is an existing paper, which was done during, not previous, but what is the pre-previous round of governance committees, which has a clear message and we checking if it's necessary to reopen it. And the travel and involvement policy is something which is relatively new on our and on the governance committee's table. And we could just get a short feeling of the room, how things are seen there. Perhaps we can start with the compensation thing?
Yes.
Would be, because just getting some feeling of the room because I got input so far, which is very broad and views and different views. So it would be nice to hear a little bit more.
Okay, thank you, Hans Peter. So let's talk about that before. And you're right, I mean, from my conversations with trustees, I know that this is kind of like a topic where different trustees have different opinions. So I think getting a straw poll to see where people are, I think it would be useful for you guys to talk in the governance committee. So I agree, it's a useful thing to do. Just so for the record, I sent the policy that we are following for the IETF-appointed trustees to the list. So you have seen it, but for the sake of the public. So the IETF, when they appoint the trustees for, in this case, which are appointed actually by the IAB, the expectation is that IETF-appointed trustees don't get any remuneration. So in that sense, it's the same thing for like, you know, the liaison that they appoint to ICANN, for example, to the ICANN board and different other liaison positions and board people. So in that sense, I know for a fact that, you know, people coming from the IETF community basically have a, you know, clear view of like, you know, not accepting remuneration. But, uh, but you know, I mean, the board also, of course, includes, you know, eight more trustees. So I think it would be nice to get a straw poll. Before we get a straw poll, any comments from anyone? Olga, please.
Thank you, Gonzalo, and thank you, Hans Peter, for the explanation. I really had no special opinion about that until last year that we went through, I was part of the NONCOM that was chaired by Alice. And I tried, I talked to many people in the region, people that I thought could suit for being a board member. And especially during the IGF in Guadalajara, in my region. The feedback that I got from many people I know that could be very, very good candidates for being a board member of this organization was that it was a lot of time investment and no remuneration for that time. So that for them, it was no incentive to participate, which I thought, then I realized that compensation could be an issue for some people that are especially independent professionals, lawyers or engineers or other professions that could take time from their, from their job and have no compensation, especially perhaps in developing regions. So that's something that I had known in mind, but I came to my, my, I realized that in last year trying to bring more people to our candidate list. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Olga, for the feedback. Any more thoughts? Okay, this is it.
Yes, I'd like to add to that since Olga mentioned people from developing countries. We had a discussion about exactly this point, that people, for example, stepping up from picky ISO Pacific Islands would have to take a five-day holiday in order to get to the trustees meeting and to really take much more time away from their daily work to allow them to serve on the board if they were good candidates. Now, the discussion we had was that these people would feel, I would say disenfranchised in being not able to stand up and run for the board if they were good candidates. I'm just giving an example of one country. And then the discussion was whether the board should actually consider that as a budget travel policy. So if you're taking time to come to a board meeting, then you would actually somehow get renumerated for those extra days of travel that you're taking off work. I realize these examples are rare, but they may exist. And that's the reason, that was the gist of the discussion we had then. I realized that appointees from the IETF would never take the compensation. And we also discussed that this compensation would be taken up by discretion of people who really need it, that it would not be abused. So I was just wondering whether this item could actually become an item of the trustees' budget policy rather than the compensation of the trustees for sitting on the board. As they keep mentioning, why does the PR board member get renumerated and they want to go there because they know they could take time off? And they're mostly from India or other developing country where, so that's my...
So what do you mean about budget versus compensation? I didn't understand that point.
So if you, if you were to, if you were to come to a trustees' meeting, then you would have some kind of available money that a trustee can take and use when it comes to a retreat or a board meeting? And that was just one of the ideas discussed.
Okay, I see. So you are not thinking of something like, you know, X dollars a month, but more like, hey, I was flying for two days and I get a daily allowance. So per diem, as usually they refer to. Okay.
People from Pacific would probably have to take much more longer than anybody else. That's why I'm demonstrating they need to have to take two days or three days to get a boat, which goes only once a week, to the nearest airport to get to the airport where they have to take a flight to wherever we have a meeting.
Any other comments? So I think I'm going to take two straw polls. I don't know if straw poll is qualified as slang or it's a normal term, but I will explain. It's just an unofficial vote that, you know, it doesn't have any official validity, but it's just to sense the, you know, to test the water, let's say. So I'm going to be asking two questions, following up on the CERES clarification. Like, you know, what would trustees think of a compensation policy? So basically getting money for being a trustee. And the second will be, what would people think about a per diem type of, you know, travel compensation allowance? So the first one, what would people, trustees think about, you know, considering a compensation for the board? So, um... Sorry? Yeah, that was going to say. So it's going to be, you know, yes, I mean, we should, we should consider that. No, I'm completely opposed to that. Or abstain, which means, you know, I don't have any information or I would like to think more of that. Just, I mean, I just want to give, because to be clear, this is discussed in the governance committee. So I just want to give Hans Peter a bit of like, you know, sense. If it's something that, you know, the twelve trustees oppose, well, maybe you can give it lower priority because it's very clear. If it's something that the twelve trustees approve, maybe you can give it higher priority because it's, you know, it's more likely. And keeping in mind that, you know, to pass any resolution, you need at least seven trustees, which is a majority. So I think this is the type of feedback you would like to have in order to prioritize the discussions. Is that a fair summary? Okay, so which trustees would be in favor of considering a general compensation for trustees? Please raise your hands. And that's two, Glenn and Olga. Walid, then I can ask you individually or you can speak up whenever you want. Which trustees basically would be opposed to having a compensation for trustees? Please raise your hands. Which is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven and eight. So eight trustees and which...
Did you get Walid?
Yeah, I think I got Walid. And then who would abstain? Hans Peter? Yeah, we're missing one. Okay, so two abstain, eight against, two in favor. The, well, I don't think we need to capture that, but yeah, you need, you did capture that, right? Yeah, since it's informal, yeah, we don't have to... Okay, straw poll. The second straw poll, I would like to get, as I said, following up on this CERES distinction because I think it's important, is like, who would be, you know, or who thinks that, you know, the governance committee should consider giving up per diem for trustees that they travel, you know, a long distance or spend several days in coming to a board meeting? So trustees in favor, please raise your hand.
No. I'm sorry to make your life difficult. It depends on, it depends on the details.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So if it depends on the detail, you should abstain. Because, I mean, we don't have time to discuss the details. It's just like people are clearly in favor, clear. Okay, so let me ask again. Those in favor? So one, two, three, four, five? Okay. Oh, and Walid, sorry, Walid, six. So six in favor. Who abstains, which, I mean, I'm included as well, like, depending on the details, but I think it's worthwhile for, for, for the compensation committee to consider it. So who abstains? So one, two, three, four, five, six. And I think, no, well, somebody wants to vote no? Yeah. Okay, so do you have the information you need?
Thank you.
Okay, so the next topic was the Code of Conduct?
Sorry, the Code of Conduct is still on improvement. I would like to continue working on this, following the recommendations part. So I would really like to invite everybody to have a look over it during the next one, two, three weeks and give some feedback to us, to the governance committee, to follow this later on as a third task. Leads to the last thing, which is coming up over the last weeks, is, let's say, a renewal of the board of trustee travel policy. We have an existing policy, which has a clear or relatively clear rules, which have relative hard limits, what to do to go to the board, tell the board what you are doing. And it's only that trustees might receive travel funds or travel support if they are requested to do so by staff or KESI directly. And I believe we have an implicit number of two that's limited to a small number of events per year. Some, no, several trustees asked me or asked the governance committee to review this policy and open it up. And on the extreme side, it should be a policy for the board to educate board members by allowing them or supporting them going to events in their ability to do things for the board. But there's a wide range. And again, questions? Do you want to give me or give us some input where to go and...
Yeah, thank you, Hans Peter. Maybe for those joining remotely, let me explain a bit what we are talking about. So we are talking about non-board meetings. So the travel policy for board meetings is very clear. So I just want to clarify, we are not discussing that. So we are discussing things like trustee going to a conference to give a talk on behalf of ISO, just to be clear. And also to summarize, I think there's two distinct points of view, at least that I've heard from you. And if I'm missing something, please, you know, add up to that. So one thing is to go and represent ISO on an event. It could be a conference and summit to give a presentation, to have a conversation, whatever. And the other is, and I think Walid brought this up at some point, capacity building, right? So board capacity building, you know, board members could develop skills, whatever, going to this particular conference or to an IETF or something like that, which we have done partially by sending some of the trustees to the technical fellows program, for example. So that would be part of not so much representing ISO, but building capacity in the board, right? Which it was considered, I'm not expressing necessarily in my personal opinion, trying to summarize. It would be, for example, beneficial for someone in the policy community to know about the IETF or someone in the IETF to know about, you know, our community people. So this type of scenarios. Is there any other scenario? Or you think that summarizes basically what has been discussed? The cases where we are talking about this? Okay, good. So now I think we open the mic for comments. Yeah, so Walid, you are first, please.
Yes, indeed. I mean, thank you for bringing this up. I wasn't ready to discuss it openly, but now that it's brought up, so I'd like to bring it up to the open. And I think it's important, given the fact that the board is managed or governed by a group of people who are strategically located or positioned to give an opinion. Because occasionally, I reflect on the history of the ISO board. I see that while in the past, it was much, much more, more technical driven and ideas, I mean, this is the history of ISO. As years pass, the policy aspect of it has become more and more relevant. And the recent years have resulted in a number of important global events, including the IGF, for example, not only the international one, but also the regional ones, et cetera. And it's important, in my opinion, that if board members aren't aware of what happens on the IGF, as much as possible, being closely networked within the communities that are meeting at these events, it's bringing in some sort of, let's say, lack of opportunity to pursue and the personal capacity level. It means that as much as possible, we'd like to also know the environment ecosystem as individual board members, not necessarily actually give a speech or present ISO, but as much as improve our own capacity and understanding the current trends. but as much as improve our own capacity in understanding the current trends in the internet ecosystem, understanding the various active players in the field and positioning ourselves, seeing ISO from a different lens, from outside as well. Because otherwise, it might turn out to be an echo chamber that we meet in the board events only and not necessarily in a broader context of the internet.
Thank you, Walid. Any, any other comments? Olga, please.
Thank you, Gonzalo, and thank you, Walid. I fully agree with what you said. I would like to add something, especially in, in regional events. The regional teams are small. And if, if, if the presence of the ISO of the organizations is limited to the staff, which are doing a great job and the staff is really a small team, it's also usually the same people going to different regional meetings. So adding participation from the board could broaden the perspective and the, the image that we send to the regional activities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't see any, any hands. Okay, so let me kind of summarize also. Hans Peter was pointing into the existing policies so that we, we kind of, you know, get on the same page and give some guidelines. So on the, on the, let's call it, you know, representing ISO on, on events, we discussed that last year. And the, the basically, well, conflict of interest or if you want to call it optics, like the optics issue we want to avoid is that the, the, basically the CEO needs to basically, you know, I mean, handle that. But having a trustee ask the CEO to, to, in this case Cathy, to go somewhere, it creates a conflict because basically you are overseeing management and management basically will have, you know, not an incentive to basically to deny this type of request. So it's problematic. That's why we, we talk about this self-disclosure policy, which would be discussing the board, which is basically now where we could say, hey, this makes sense or this doesn't make sense. At the same time, we had this, as Hans Peter said, implicit limit, like, you know, two trips in a year would be reasonable, more than that would not be reasonable. So I don't know if people think that, you know, the limit is too low or the limit is too high or it makes no sense for the board to discuss or it has to be discretionary to the trustees. So what are the, the open issues there? Because I understood, I mean, that's the current policy, right? So if we are having this discussion, I understand that someone wouldn't agree with the current policy. If we all agree, I mean, we just can move on. Yeah, Olga.
Just a clarifying question. You, you said that, my understanding is that a trustee could express interest in participating in an event. Of course, it can, the organization can say yes or no. And of course, it depends on how many times or have, have this trustee participated in other events in representation of ISO. So I, but you said there is a conflict in asking the CEO.
No, so, yeah, so the, the conflict we talked about last year was that, let's say, I express interest. And I said, Kathy, I would like to go to the ITF because I actually do ISO work there. So yeah, Kathy would, could push back and say, no, because, you know, I don't think that's reasonable. But most likely, she would say, I mean, yeah, go, because we are overseeing her performance. So in that sense, you know, it's basically natural to just, you know, give, you know, whatever request. And, and that's why, I mean, usually in all companies, they have this type of, you know, rules for avoiding basically, you know, people overseeing your performance to, to get, let's say, something from, from your subordinate. So it's this type of, it's not a conflict of interest, but I mean, I don't know which term to use, but, but it's that type of issue we talked about last year. That's why, sorry? Yeah, that's why we, we basically lifted that type of discussion to the board because the board, we are peers, so it's much more natural to have that discussion. So, so that was the, the point I was trying to make. Yeah. Somebody was requesting the floor. Oh, Richard.
I was just gonna speak up in favor of the current policy, which seems to me to be pretty reasonable and strike a good balance between making trustees available, enabling ISO to leverage the trustees while at the same time avoiding these conflicts.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Desiree.
So just to say that it goes, you know, two ways. If, so that means that staff or Kathy can ask a trustee. And in that case, we shouldn't feel like, why is this trustee always being picked up? You know, there is a pressure. So it goes both ways. I think we need to strike the balance.
And that's a very good point. And that's why I think that having, so, so my, my, my own opinion, actually, when, when Hans Peter said there's an implicit limit in two trips, I would actually make the limit explicit because I think that would remove most of the, of the discussions. Because if we understand that, look, I mean, up to two, you are super likely to get it, well, approved. So there's no need to discuss. And you know that the third trip is very likely to get rejected until, I mean, unless there's a very good reason. Then, so we get basically out of this conflict and having this discussion. So if you ask me, that would be my, my personal.
If ISO needs more spokespeople, we should hire more spokespeople.
Okay, so Glenn and then Kathy.
Sure. I took advantage of that opportunity and I thanked the board for the opportunity to be here for the ITF. Limiting it to only two may not be prudent in certain circumstances. I, I think it's a question of situation. Say a very important event's coming up that, that we should be at and perhaps that person has done their line, they've done their two. But the fact that other people can't go, so I think we need some latitude.
Absolutely, that's not a hard limit. It's a limit that you will likely get your request rejected, but if there's a very good reason, of course, you should be able to do that.
Right.
And, and I think using common sense should be encouraged. I fully agree.
I'm not even moving my mouth when he's speaking. I guess what I'm thinking of is the person, is that the right person to go? You know, do they have the skill sets and they represent the organization well to be there? That, that's a critical piece, that may not be part of it, but I think I just want to throw that into the mix.
That, that was basically what Desiree was pointing also to, that usually it was staff basically asking the trustee with basically, you know, the right skill set or whatever you, you say. So, so maybe, you know, Hans Peter, in the, in the committee, you want to refine that to, to basically, you know, I don't think we have time to discuss it, not to explain what we mean by, by that, actually. So that, that's a very good point, Glenn. You wanted to?
I just want to point out, there shouldn't always be a speaking, a request. So if there's, we understand there's the ITF learning or you need to be involved with the community. So we find with this hard line of two and anything about the two, no, it has to be discussed. I think that's what we disagree to.
Yeah, and to be clear, I mean, everything has to be disclosed. It's just that usually it's like, hey, this is my first trip, this is my second trip. So we wouldn't expect much discussion unless it's a completely unreasonable request, which I don't expect to get any of those. So that's, Kathy, yeah.
So I just didn't want to, I was gonna say what Glenn says. This is on staff too. There are some of you who are experts in your area. And the staff really admires and sees a terrific use for you out there to go and speak to what you know. So I think some of that you're seeing and you're in different, and you are in different areas of expertise. So we have to discipline ourselves as well. And I think that's something we can, we should take into consideration. But I do think that's how this happens. You know, it's a particular panel with a particular thing and a person has expertise to talk about it and we love to put you out there. So little flexibility is good too.
Yeah, absolutely. And let me talk a bit about Richard's comment because actually, I mean, I'm, I'm coming from, from the same point, actually. So, so we cannot forget that there's an opportunity cost, right? So we have, as a board, we have a strategy, we have focus areas. And let's face it, the number of cycles that we can all spend on board work are limited. So when a board member, instead of being working on our focus areas, is traveling to Summit X to give a presentation, there's an opportunity cost because board work is not being done. So in that sense, if we need to send a board member, you know, 12 times in a year because he's an expert on something, he should probably be ISO staff. So in that sense, or a consultant or something, not a board member. So in that sense, let's not forget the opportunity cost because, I mean, the board member, just to be super clear, the role is to advance the focus area of the board. And, you know, it's great that we can help the organization in several ways. I think the limit of two is kind of like a nice trade off. But if this goes extreme, you know, more than two, three, whatever, it's, it's not reasonable, right? So we would be talking about what is the role we want to perform. So having said that, this is like about representing ISO and the capacity building thing. I think we could easily include it into this limit. So you could say, you know, hey, I want to go to the ITF because I want to learn. So I would be, at least personally, completely okay with also covering this type of thing within the, you know, limit. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I mean, just Gonzalo, I mean, reference to the capacity aspect is never mentioned in the travel. So it's just a matter of speaking smart. That's why I thought maybe we can update the policy to allow the aspect of capacity.
Yes. Yeah, well, that's why I pointed that it was brought up to you. And I think that was a really good point because exactly because of that, because he's not capturing the current policy. So I think we should, you know, yeah, capture it. And thanks for bringing it up because I think it's, it's a really good point, the fact that, you know, there's these two types of traveling and we should capture both. So, so please work with Hans Peter so that, you know, something that makes sense gets captured in the, in the new policy. Thanks. Any more comments, Hans Peter? Glenn? So, no, sorry, because I was looking for like hands and sometimes people do the tack thing. So I'll, I'll try to pay attention to both. Hans Peter?
Just in the sake of time, I got the feeling that we don't need a straw poll on this one. I see everybody is in favor of doing a review of the existing policy regarding these points we have collected. And if anything else comes up, please send it to me and I will include it. That's okay for everybody?
One last comment that maybe, I mean, for people to understand, I mean, the reason I think it's reasonable to, to talk about trips instead of talking in terms of dollars or euros is that we have, of course, a, a policy regarding, you know, travel. So in that sense, I mean, that policy sets a limit on, you know, how much a trip costs and I think the guidelines are clear. So in that sense, I think it makes sense to talk in terms of trips as opposed to a fixed number of dollars, if that works for everyone. Thank you, Hans Peter. Did you get what you wanted?
Okay, I can only say thank you for the input and we have some work to do.
Excellent, thank you. And yeah, and you guys have a meeting of the governance committee this evening where you can, you know, flesh out a bit and work on the details. That's perfect. Thank you, Hans Peter. Okay, moving on to point number six on the agenda, which is the approval of the amendment of the Audit Committee chapter in order to, to basically address the compliance committee. So John, please.
Well, you pretty much, you, you, yeah, you pretty much said it. The ISO has set up a, an internal compliance committee run by, run by Sandy, which will deal with internal compliance issues. And it's a standard governance thing. Once a year, they will communicate to the audit committee what they have, what they have discovered. So we need to edit the audit committee's charter. And I've already talked to her and we already have seen, I think we, we don't have, we don't have any outstanding issues, do we? Well, you're, you're gonna do it and we'll take the reports. So I guess, this is Resolution 2017XX, the amendment to the Audit Committee Charter, resolved that the board approves amendment to the Audit Committee Charter as presented, which states that the committee shall exercise oversight over a compliance committee composed of ISO senior management. I will, I will move that.
Okay, so Richard seconded it. Richard seconded it. We're gonna vote again, I mean, pass the resolution by voice vote. So I'm gonna be asking for yes, abstain and no. Well, yes, no and abstain as, as usual. So trustees voting yes, please say yes.
Yes.
Okay, so for the record, Walid said yes as well. And trustees voting no, please say no. And trustees voting abstain, say, please say aye. Okay, I like to keep you on your toes, so you pay attention. So the resolution passes unanimously. Okay, um, thank you. So, so the, the next item on the agenda is the, the chapter report. But since we are a bit ahead of the schedule, maybe we can do a bit of agenda bash. So we have a resolution later this evening about the approval of the, of the PIR to additional contracts. So since we had a meeting, I don't think we would need the, the five-minute executive session I had scheduled. Would everyone be comfortable voting on the resolution right now? Okay?
Hold on a second while I move it around.
So that's point number 10? Yeah, so we are canceling nine and we are moving to 10, which is the approval of execution of PIR contract. So John, you want to read that? The proposed resolution?
Yeah. This is approved PIR additional contracts resolved that the board hereby approves additional, resolved that the board hereby approves additional contracts between PIR and affiliates as presented for a term of one year. And I would notice that, I would note that we discussed this with the PIR board and they had no objection.
Okay, so I assume you, you move, John?
I'll move.
Okay, so John moves, Harish second. So as, as this has to do with, with money, I will basically, well, we will pass the resolution by roll call. So I will, you know, start with Walid and then in this order. So the options is voting yes, no or abstain. So Walid?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Hans Peter?
Yes.
Alice?
Yes.
Hiroshi?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Gonzalo?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Desiree?
Abstain.
Richard?
Yes.
Olga?
Yes.
Harish?
Yes.
Okay, so the resolution passes with 11 positive votes and one abstention. Great. Okay, thank you. Okay, so welcome, welcome again to the meeting. We are resuming in, in point number seven, which is to get a, a report from our, our local chapter here in Singapore. So I would like to thank you guys for having come here. And this is something that we, we are doing it usually when, when we have board meetings in different parts of the world where we have local chapters. And it's been a really great experience to understand what you guys are up to and what's going on in the different regions. That's also another region why, reason why we are rotating our, our board meetings and we go to different regions. So we are looking forward to seeing what you guys have to present, so please.
Okay, great, thank you for having us here. My name is Brian. I am the program chair for the Local Internet Society Singapore Chapter. The current president, Benjamin, is a cybersecurity expert and this period of time is really busy for him. You'll hear about it because Singapore is really in the midst of revamping its cyber, well, introducing its cybersecurity framework. So he apologizes that he can't make it and so I've been tasked to deliver this report. I just wanted to show you who the office bearers are currently. So as I said, Benjamin is the current president. The vice president is Anka. Anka is here, Anka, could you stand up? Yes, so Anka's our vice president. Anka's lecturer, he teaches law in one of the polytechnics. And we have our secretary who's here, Sophia. Sophia is also an academic with the National University of Singapore. And we have our treasurer, Sanjeev, who's not here. Sanjeev is in the IT industry. We have our education chair, Jay. Jay's with Amazon Cloud Services. Program chair, that's me, Brian, I'm a lawyer in practice. We have a few other roles. Our webmaster is Roland Turner. He's a data protection officer. We have our international liaison professor, Ang Ping Kua, also an academic with the Nanyang Technological University. And we have our honorary auditor, Mr. Harish Palay, needs to introduction. Yep. And so you see that we've actually been quite active with rotating our roles over the years. And we believe that's, that's one of the, the things we should be doing so that we can bring in more and more people to the chapter. The chapter is fairly young, it's only five years old. So I'll, I'll give you a brief glimpse of what we've done in the last year. So we could have the next slide. Okay, so let's, let's see what we did last year. So obviously, we took part in Intercommunity 2017. The 2018 one will be next year's report. We had a good facility out in NTU supporting us, so it's, and we were a note, so that was well done. The next thing, please. Okay, so this is something we tend to do a lot of, often Singapore, a lot of education and advocacy work. And what we've discovered is we, we are quite blessed in Singapore. We have quite a number of think tanks. So there's people out there doing research on specific topics. This topic was on the use of internet in election politics. Most other groups in Singapore will never take this topic, but we are open for that. And so we found a group of people who had done research. And so we found a group of people who had done research on that and we got them over to present. So quite a unique topic on how the internet affected the politic, the political elections that happened in Singapore. Okay, so next one.
But, um, the internet in terms of attacks or in terms of information spreading?
Ah, so in terms of information spreading, in terms especially of how the political parties were beginning to use or the different ways in which they were using internet. And whether, I guess, the essential question that everybody wanted to know, how big of an effect was the internet on the political result? Is it a lot of echo chambers or is it, you know, real sentiment on the ground? So very interesting research done from a Singapore angle. Okay, so next one. We tend to also do a lot of feedback sessions for the government. In the sense where the government's looking to change some laws. And we see it as part of our role to help collect the feedback from the ground, especially if it involves the internet community to some extent. And so this one was done on proposed amendments to a copyright act. The amendments that were proposed were actually fairly wide. The entire copyright act was out for change. So if I recall, we had like, get to split the amendments among five lawyers, got them in to explain each portion and then try to collect the feedback all at one go. So that's something else we tend to do a lot and that's something we did last year. Next slide, please. So cybersecurity, as I mentioned before, Singapore is in the midst of putting in its cybersecurity legislation. Ben is in the thick of it. He's the point person to, in one of the think tanks, to collect all that feedback for the government. And so we've been quite active in going out, explaining to our members, explaining to even, we have a lot of non-members turning up for these sessions to provide feedback on how the cybersecurity act will affect them or whether it's been done properly. So that's been quite active. We've also been involved with consultations with the the proposed regulator. I think Harish himself personally wrote in also, so we've been doing quite a lot of that work. Okay, next one, please. Yeah, so as you can see, we've we did a couple of sessions. I think we did three in all last year. So one of the unique things that we found was in Singapore, we have a membership of, you know, hovering between thirty, forty, fifty people. When we started combining with other groups in this one, we combined with the Singapore Computer Society and the National Trade Union Congress. We had, I think, about hundred and twenty people turning up for that. So we found that our reach was actually increasing beyond our official membership to this. And I'll I'll speak a little bit about this wider network later on. Okay, next one. Okay, so going on ahead with our our now partnership, our our joining the N T U C network, we get invited to events. I think Jay spoke at this event on disruption. This was targeted at professionals, mid-level executives, who, as we know, are very much affected by this new revolution of disruption. And so we we provided speakers. How many people turned up? Five hundred? Or six hundred and fifty people turned up at these sessions? Okay. Next, we also tend to do quite esoteric topics, not the usual kind of stuff you see on the Internet Society. This one was on disruptive urban planning. So it's about technology interfacing with urban planning. We we got in a professor from from an architectural background. And he was actually sitting in Scotland when he did this. So we did this over webinar that opened this to the other chapters. Okay, good. Next one. We do have a lot of conferences that are open in Singapore. So as you know, this week was also Fintech Festival aside from I E T F. There is a big con exhibition known as Communicate Asia. And we'll be get invites to also provide speakers for that. So we had a couple of guys, Benjamin, in this case, was talking about developments in cyber law. So again, we have a very big audience for that. In our partnership with N T U C, we also now have, provide them speakers to speak with different groups of unionized members. There's a big thing in Singapore going on about trying to get our union members who ordinarily might not be interested in issues on the internet. But since disruption is going to affect everyone, issues like cyber wellness, cybersecurity start coming in. And so we're providing speakers to go out to these new groups of people to talk to them about this issue. So that's very much in line with our aim for education. Okay, next one. Okay, here we get, again, have the Cybersecurity Act. So as I said, we did, we've done quite a number of different items on this. Next one. Okay, so for this year, we've already done Intercommunity two thousand and seventeen. We also took part in a fintech type event called Insurbike. And I think we were planning to take part in the A I S Asian Internet Symposium, but that hasn't taken place yet. So those are some of the plans. There are a couple of other plans that we are looking at for this year. So cybersecurity remains a theme that will continue for this year. The second thing is we are aware that there are plans by various countries to start introducing digital tax, attacks on e-commerce. And I think we think this has an impact on both small businesses that are beginning to use the internet as well as users in terms of accessibility to a range of products, especially if they're carried by small and medium enterprises, they'll probably stop carrying those products. So we think that's that's an issue that should be going out there. So we are going to plan a couple of education feedback type sessions for that. I said I'll spend a bit of time to talk about also our N T U C tie-up. And the the question for this is, um, it's quite atypical for an Internet Society group to tie up with a a union group. But I will explain that in Singapore's context, it's slightly different. In in Singapore, we traditionally protected unions and the group called the N T U C, a congress of all the different unions. The union has found that, the congress has found over time, that most of the working population in Singapore has now moved into non-unionized positions, meaning your professionals, your managers, your your engineers, your technicians. And so more people qualify not to be union members than union members. So a couple of years ago, they decided that they needed to group all the so-called P M E Ts together because they now serve, they now make up a larger proportion of the workforce. Under the group also comes people like freelance workers, your Uber drivers, your freelance contractors. And so they've created that entire network and last year they approached us to join that network. We were initially quite hesitant because we didn't really see ourselves as a kind of a unionized entity or representing any specific profession. But I think some of the things that have, that that we've discovered over the last year tends to give us a quite an optimistic view of the future. One, most of the other professional organizations in in this network tend to be groups like engineers, doctors, lawyers. And their outlook tends to be very inward looking. They're looking at how to promote the professionalism of engineers or how to raise the, um, the the knowledge of engineers, how to regulate engineers, just using engineers as example, but one of the be an engineer now, but your job will require perhaps a huge amount of computing knowledge. Maybe some knowledge of databases, some some knowledge of analytics. And so the need to cut across other specialisms, other fields of study, or maybe other less informal fields of study becomes important. And that's where the I S O C plays a role because we tend to be a bit less structured. We are not really here to protect professions. We're not really here to push a profession. We are really here to push the availability of knowledge for the betterment of humankind. And so we 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 are a lot more flexible. We tend to be a lot more on the cutting edge than most professional organizations. So we serve quite a good function and this really allows us to get exposed to a huge number of people. The entire professional network in there is currently at about three hundred thousand people. So all our activities now get blasted up to those three hundred thousand people. And that's why we get a a much better turnout than our own membership size. So I think there's a lot of promise in that. At the same time, the leadership of the local I S O C chapter will get invited. We have been invited to some of the smaller meetings where they get out the political leaders to explain some of the government issues. And we get direct contact with them. There's a lot of worry about the issue of jobs and disruption. And so now we're the forefront, providing our input on that. And I think that's also something that I saw wishes to have for a lot of its chapters, that we have some kind of level of engagement with the regulators and we are seen to make ourselves available to provide that level of input. So, you know, I'm I'm hopeful for the future that that will continue. So far, I think we we've acquitted ourselves quite well. We've been very supportive. We've been providing very valuable feedback on what we feel the internet user group in Singapore would look at various issues. So, uh, and people have found that useful, so they continue to engage us and to get our views on that. I I think that that's a good step for the future. Another thing that I wanted to cover, which I've not put on the slides, was an issue that a couple of us worked on quite intensively. And that's when a huge number of Singapore users were sent letters by lawyers regarding downloading. And it's a, it's a touchy issue because, yes, downloading illegal movies is wrong, but there is also, uh, you know, issues like whether the remedy sought were appropriate, whether the method sought in getting their information and sending them demands were appropriate. And the local chapter here felt that we had to get sufficient information out to help any users that were faced with this issue. Some adequate help because a lot of them were unable to secure adequate legal advice. So Harish, Indranil, Benjamin, myself, we played quite a a key role in, first, we recorded a video that mimicked the entire system, the entire process. Harish made a complaint against the the lawyers for overreaching. And we also provided some technical advice in some of the the cases that went in. I'm happy to announce that we've we've at least managed to raise that profile in the eyes of the public. And so far, as far as we know, no users have been wrongly accused of downloading, um, um, material. So everyone looks quite happy and I think that gets us a a good profile within the community. And the the people agree that we are of some utility, so and that's important. I think other than that, Sophia, Jay, you want to add anything, Anka? No, okay, so I tell you what, um, I may be ahead of time. Okay, so if does, if anyone has questions for anyone from here and that includes Harish, if you want to throw a throw a question at him, not for beautiful questions, go ahead. Yes.
Thank you very much for the presentation and I commend you for for your hard work. How, I would like to know how, how do you relate with the members of your chapter? If you have newsletters or if you do meetings for the full membership? Just to share some experience with our chapter, we have members from the city, but also Argentina is a large country, so we have members from the interior. And we also have members from other countries in the region. So sometimes it's hard to get a a strong link with all of them. So maybe you can share with your experience with with me or with us.
So how how do we keep in touch with the membership? So that, I think, there are three primary ways. One, we've got a Facebook page going. But that's mainly entertainment picture value. We have also an email blast going out so automatically to the whole group about anything that we feel the entire group needs to know. It's, we are a bit fortunate because Singapore is not that big a place, so forty-five minute commute basically gets you from one place in Singapore to any other place in Singapore. And so it's quite easy to to get together, to get people together. We find that for the local chapter, the preference is to have meetings in the evening. Most of us, I think, work. And so a meeting at the evenings is 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 helpful. Harish has kindly opened his office for most of them. So we we tend to have a lot of meetings at his office. And as I said, recently, we also have our meetings at N T U C. They are all downtown locations. So we're quite fortunate to be, have this resource and, you know, we either get charged a very low rate or no, or for free. So that has helped us quite a lot, I think. Yes.
So in terms of chapter management, I like the idea that you guys sort of kind of rotate the chairmanship essentially to make sure that you continually get people involved. Are there any issues with that? Do you think that there's like a continual flow of new blood into the system essentially?
Uh, well, we certainly see the flow of new blood and maybe that's a function of Singapore because Singapore is quite an open country. So we have a lot of people joining the chapter because, simply because they've moved into the country and they've been a member in another chapter somewhere. And so they're they're looking up for the chapter. So we we are naturally getting that that kind of talent coming in. They are already familiar with the whole I S O C setup. And so, you know, they 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 made themselves available, so that that's really helpful. In addition, I think we also have more and more people who are beginning to learn about us and identify us. That's helped a lot because I think right now we get a fair amount of queries from the press. The press, when there's an internet issue, they they always want to hear the view from the internet users and really, you know, I'm sure in Singapore as well as in many places, there is no other group who can say we are a group of internet users, organized group of internet users except for I S O C. So we get a fair amount of press quotes that that get put in. And so members of the the executive committee will get quoted in the press that that again gives us additional visibility, attracts new members into the chapter. And so we've been fortunate. I think it's personally my view. For every organization, it's it's quite essential to have a a constant rotation of people. The same group of people there, you know, all the time doing the same thing tends to get stale quite quickly. So by rotating that, you know, you you ensure that you get a lot of fresh ideas in. And I haven't really quite seen the effects of a lack of continuity. I don't think we've seen that. And I think that's partly because the previous committee members tend to still remain involved in some capacity. We get them to be involved in some capacity. And so that that's helpful for continuity, but yeah. Yes.
Thank you so much for such a good presentation. I think I was, we were here three years, three years ago. And I remember then the chapter gave a, in fact, I think Harish maybe was the head of the chapter at the time. And I I remember thinking, my goodness, how smart you all are and you're still smart. You're still one of my favorite groups because you're thinking all the time about, you know, what's next. I think being here in Singapore, to your point, it's a open, it's an open society and you get to do a lot of this work in a pretty spectacular way. When I'm looking at all the chapters that are in this region, it, I wonder about how you can share what you're doing and your, um, the the kinds of things you're pursuing are being pursued all over the world, right? And here in this region, they are particularly important. You've gone through three consults on cyber, cyber security. I suspect you have now a lot of knowledge. I'm wondering whether you are using the internet the way we have started to think about like an intercommunity. Can you do something like that regionally? Can you, you know, find yourselves meeting with each other and sharing ideas, et cetera? I'd love to hear a little bit about that.
Okay, so I I would admit we haven't really thought about that. But I agree with you. I think in Singapore, we tend to be what I call the bird park. And let me explain, a lot of countries, including Singapore, build the bird park at the at the edge of the country. And the idea is that if, you know, something goes wrong, there's some kind of, you know, nuclear fallout, you know, poison gas attack. When the birds start falling, then you realize that. And so Singapore is kind of like the bird park for the internet. Because we tend to get the the advanced issues of the internet a bit before the rest of the countries. Partly because we're connected, maybe because we are suckers. But we certainly see issues like, you know, Singapore is right at the forefront of cybersecurity because we are one of the most hit countries or the most targeted countries. We seem to get all these downloading issues because we are, we download a lot and we are fairly rich, so we are, you know, straight up target. So we tend to get most of these advanced issues before So, we tend to get most of these advanced issues before the other countries, and we should be open in sharing our experiences with them should they arise. And so, that's certainly a thought, I think. You know, the gauntlet is down for the committee to think about how we can then extend that, make that resource available. What we do try to do is, every consult that we do, we try to stream that or record that and then put that on, so at least that's available. But I think making available also the other experiences, if they're not recorded, or even if they're recorded, there's still, you know, metadata under that that we can share. We should think about how we can then share that kind of knowledge.
Well, I would be very curious whether you could pull off a kind of mini intercommunity. Can you imagine just, you know, in your region, which is quite large? It's not like you're all cuddled together, but you, I think we have quite a number of chapters in this region, and it would be just fascinating. And you could rotate leadership on some things, you know, and get smarter and smarter, and then help us in the other regions.
I certainly think that's something we can think about, and I believe the Asia-Pac people come in after that, and you know, we will take it up with them.
Okay, any, any more questions for the guys? So, Brian has promised to give us the secret presentation in the break.
That was it.
Jokes aside, I mean, thanks a lot. It's, I mean, really good to see you in a snapshot of what you guys have been doing. And, yeah, I mean, some new ideas to maybe try and check, you know, what could be possible because that sounds, yeah, actually, I mean, potentially useful, absolutely. Okay, so, thank you very much. I mean, please stick around because the idea is to have also some social time with you guys now during the break. We had some before the break as well. And for the remote participants, we're gonna be back in thirty minutes, so twenty past three, so in thirty minutes.
Yes, speaking about remote participants, I'd like to convey my regards to the chapter, and it's been really fascinating presentation. I'm sorry for not being there in person, but we as board members, all of us admire your work. Keep it up.
Okay, thank you, Waleed. Okay, so, we had a really good presentation by the Singapore chapter, and we had a break with them to socialize a bit and get to know them a bit better, and I think that was useful. So, now we are in point number eight of the agenda, and in the intercommunity meeting that we had a couple of months ago, we were saying that, you know, our idea is to strengthen our regional operations, and as part of that, we already met our regional team in Kenya last time we went there. And I think the whole board thought that was a really great experience to know our, you know, regional operations there, to know a bit more, you know, what they were doing. So, we thought, you know, organizing something similar now that we are here in Singapore would be, would be great. So, we have our team here, and, you know, you have ninety minutes to let us know, you know, what you have been up to. So, Rush, please.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. Much appreciated. Is it okay if I stand and talk? Is it okay? Yeah, thank you.
Yes. If you can do both things at the same time.
Because I want to feel my people as well. Right. So, just to give you a very quick overview of what we intend to do today. So, my team's here with me, and Naveed's there on Zoom.
And by the way, I mean, just to let them know that last time, you know, we met, it was in my first meeting as a trustee in Auckland. So, people watching remotely, they thought we were the same person.
So, one of my friends sends me a note saying, "Rat, man, you've lost a lot of weight." It was Gonzalo's stage, because we were on panels back-to-back, so they got confused, so. So, that's why he wears glasses all the time now, and you know. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So, thank you for that. It's always funnier. So, Naveed's on Zoom, of course. He couldn't, he's actually sitting at a meeting in Bangkok, which we could not get him out of, so he'll join us for a little while. He'll speak as well. I've asked all the team to speak, so you get to hear from them, Derek, instead of me yapping on for an hour and a half. And the plan basically is they'll each cover things that they're doing, but as well a bit of what else the region is doing as well. So, Kevin, could I have the first slide? So, just a snapshot of what the region looks like for us in numbers, basically. So, we have about thirty-one percent of the global individual members who reside in this region, or say that they reside in this region. We've had about fifteen percent year-on-year growth. That's been relatively steady. It fluctuates between about fifteen to eighteen. So, last year it was about eighteen, fifteen percent growth. We have twenty-two chapters. The most recent, of course, is from India, from Mumbai. And just prior to that, we had Afghanistan come along, so, which I think was quite interesting, as you all know, Afghanistan's come to a lot of turmoil over the years. So, being able to assist them, I think it's been quite useful as well, and we'll see what we can do with them going forward. Chapter members, just over seventeen and a half thousand. Of course, not all individual members belong to a chapter, so it's a subset. And organizational members, we have twenty in the region as well, so it is also relatively healthy, and that's been fairly constant between fifteen and twenty over the years. Singapore, of course, is our spiritual home for the APAC team, being the hub of the region, and we've been operational here since 2011. We have a very close relationship with a lot of Singaporeans, including, of course, Harish on the board, but as well with EDB, which is the Economic Development Board, who were quite instrumental in helping us establish our operations here. The team itself is spread across the region. There's Noel, who's based in the Philippines. There's Naveed, who's on Zoom today. He's based in Pakistan. There's Aftab, who's based in Australia. There's Subashis, who's the newest addition to the team. So, he's two months young into the job, so it's, for him, it's a bit of a bit of being thrown in the deep end today. He was saying, "What? Boat meeting me? Speak?" No. But, but we coerced him to come with us. And then, of course, we had, we have Olivia. So, Olivia is actually not an employee. She's a part-time contractor to us. But I thought I would acknowledge the fact that she actually does a lot for ISOP, including way beyond what we, you know, what we remunerate her for. So, she, I would call her an integral part of the team, although I should just put the disclaimer, she's not actually an employee of ISOP. She's a part-time contractor. We, of course, have two board members also in the region, Sakisun and Harish in Japan and Singapore respectively. Next slide, please. If you want our mugshots, that's what we look like, and there's Gonzalo at the top, of course. He was much heavier then when that picture was taken, obviously. And you can see down on the right-hand side, there's another bloke who's trying to catch up to Gonzalo as well. For the main members of the team, and he's telling me he's catching up too, he's, you know, so. Next slide, please. Next slide again. So, I wanted to give you an idea of, you know, what the region is. Now, straight off, as I'm sure you all know, half the world lives in this region. Half the, in fact, more than half the world's economy now with China and India and Japan really taking off in many ways, is in this region. But as well geographically, it's also half the world, which most people don't realize, because when you look at the world map, you know, it's depending on where you look at it from, it's skewed in a very different way. Now, you see the top right-hand box that I've put out with that right-angle arrow pointing to it? That's the Pacific Ocean, and that's actually thirty percent of the Earth's surface. If we took all the continents of the world, and we took Greenland as well, and we throw it into the Pacific Ocean, there's still space left. So, just to give you an idea of how vast that ocean is, and, you know, Asia-Pacific, and then, of course, there's the Asia side of it as well, which is quite significant in itself. Another bit of trivia, which, and I may be saying something you already know, Australia is bigger than the continental US in terms of geography. So, when you fly from Sydney to Singapore, for example, for four and a half hours, you still fly over Australia. And then, there's a two and a half hours, three hours, you go over Southeast Asia and end up in Singapore. So, just the vastness is interesting. My friend Aftab, who is Pakistani by origin, but he lives in Australia now, we've been doing some work in Pakistan, setting up IXP's and so on. When he has to travel to Pakistan, it takes him twenty hours to travel there. Of course, it takes us twelve hours to go to the west coast of the US from Sydney, but twenty hours to get to Pakistan. So, again, just to give you an idea. Next slide, please. Hope that sort of laid, you know, I won't say the foundation, but then it just made you realize, you know, we sometimes tend to forget looking at maps and moving, going to countries and how big places are. One of the challenges we, of course, have in the region, you know, it's a large region, lots of, more than half the world's languages. It's very diverse. Getting to places is hard. You know, we heard from the Singapore chapter before on how they have to deal with the cutting-edge of issues, but in this region, we have all sides of that spectrum, right? We've got the most advanced countries, like Singapore and Japan, for example. But at the other end of the spectrum, we've got countries like North Korea, we've got Laos, and Myanmar, Burma used to be in that category as well, but of course, they have gone ahead and leaps and bounds after the reforms in that country. But the fact remains that the spectrum is huge, and that sometimes for us presents to be a challenge, because as you can see, we're a team of five that covers this region. We have to be very dynamic in how we approach things. We tend to have the need to know far more than what we normally would have to know in a similar position or role somewhere. You have to understand the cultural nuances. We have to understand the historical context sometimes when you go into a country, you know, why are things the way they are? Why do they react to certain things? Why are they so insistent on doing things a certain way? You know, so there's geopolitical issues, there's historical context, cultural issues. So, it becomes quite interesting sometimes. But, you know, I think I would speak on behalf of the team to say that this is Asia-Pacific, we are of this region, and we love this region. That's why we do what we do. And I think everyone on this team puts in a lot of hours and effort and passion in trying to make things for ISOP. But that's, I think, also because we also believe in what ISOP is and what it does, and what it, you know, what the internet has done for the world, and so much more yet to come. So, I just wanted to reiterate that. At this juncture, I also want to call as the fact that, you know, you'll see a lot of things we'll talk about today. Some of you may be in our newsletters and so on. We see the activities we're doing throughout the year. You know, all that cannot happen when all these folks, this team of mine, do what they do. You know, it's not about me. It's about these guys who make it happen. So, I'd just like to acknowledge that, you know, it's the team that makes it happen. And of course, there's other parts of ISOP as well, which pretend to help us to do what we're able to do. And then, of course, we have our chapters. You will see that when we start talking about the work we do, the chapters are actually an integral part of nearly everything we do. The chapter workshop yesterday, the Singapore chapter played a very significant part, including doing the closing. The privacy workshops we've had in other parts of the region, similarly, the Hong Kong chapter hosted one. And a digital accessibility workshop, the Jakarta chapter hosted that. So, we won't make specific references to chapters because the work we do is with chapters, not as something we do on the site. So, I just wanted to also make that quite clear. One of the tools that we developed internally within the team, and this used to be an internal tool, you know, the three, four of us sitting in a room deciding what does this region face, what are the challenges? You know, we would like to think we're smart enough and clued in enough to figure that out. But we also realized that the region is too diverse and too vast. So, we started doing this survey. Which started life, as I said, as an internal informational tool for us, which would put out to our community. So, roughly three-quarters of the responses come from our member community, and about a quarter comes from non-members. And basically, what we asked them to do is, you know, tell us what are the issues that you see you're facing, et cetera, et cetera, in the region. So, we now call it the Survey of Internet Policy Issues in Asia-Pacific, but four years ago, it started life very differently. We realized that when we started talking about these things at other events, people are saying, "Oh, can we have the report?" We said, "Well, no, because it's something we use internally." They said, "No, no, we want to see your report." So, we started publishing it. So, you'll see that on the ISOP website now. It's available. What we've done, it's not coming out very well, but for the past four years, we've actually put up what the topmost issues people that have identified since 2014. And you'll see that at least two-thirds of them have remained the same, you know, security issues, access connectivity issues, and privacy has always been there as well. For this year, for 2017, cybersecurity was number one, access was number two. And funnily enough, trust and access are the two things ISOP focuses on. So, you know, that again was a sanity check for us that, yes, we made the right decision. It's the right buckets we should be looking at. And then, data production, connectivity, and privacy, of course, came in as the other three on that list. If you haven't seen this, we'd be happy to send it out to the board or get in touch with us. We'd be happy to give that to you. I think it's interesting reading if you want to, you know, get a snapshot of what's happening in the region. And I know we had forty economies this year with over two thousand respondents, so the region is too big to claim that that represents the whole region, but I think it's a nice summary kind of snapshot that we get from that. Before I hand over to my team, I just wanted to talk about a couple of things that we've been doing over multiple years in the region. You all, of course, know about the Community Networks Program that ISOP is now doing at the global level, but we actually started that off in 2010 in Asia. So, we've been doing it for over seven years now. It has won two international awards, one, including one from our friends at ITU, which was quite nice when they gave us that, recognizing the fact that it does make a difference and an impact on the ground. And the second award was from an organization called Public Affairs Asia, which is about media engagement and policy engagement. So, again, two very different organizations gave us those two awards. The difference between this project and how we brought this to life was, you know, throwing in, building connectivity, dropping in a network is easy. You know, it's trivial stuff these days. But it's what people do with that connectivity when they have it, and that's where we put a lot of focus in. So, you know, yes, we deploy the infrastructure, but that's a very small part of what we do. What it's actually about is, you know, what contents and services do people need to be able to use that infrastructure and to better their lives, you know, improve socio-economic development and so on. So, you know, there's digital literacy we do as an example. We teach, in some instances, we've taught them macro entrepreneurship skills. We've helped them bring their handicrafts and art crafts, arts and crafts online, so they can sell it digitally without going through a middleman. You know, and, you know, each location has been somewhat different in how that's been addressed. There's lots of literature we've put out on these case studies, little stories, little snapshots. So, again, if you're interested in that, I'd be happy to send that out to the board. And you may have already seen some of that, actually. And one very big thing we focused on was women empowerment. In much of the, much of this workforce has happened in South Asia. As you know, there's cultural conditions and historical issues and contexts that come into play, which sometimes don't really empower women to be able to reach their full potential. So, one of the key focus areas for us always has been that women empowerment angle. The other issue, of course, is, and I, those who were at the OMAC meeting, I said that there as well, and I'll say it again today. In some parts of the region, you know, being born a girl puts you at a disadvantage of the day you're born. So, this year, what we've done is that we have, in one of the sites, with one of our partners and with the involvement of the government, actually, which was quite nice, we are starting to do a bit of supplementary education using our community network system. The teachers, due to cultural reasons, they sit remotely in Islamabad, in the capital, and then they connect to this rural school in Multan, which is about an eight-hour, ten-hour, eight, ten-hour drive from Islamabad. And I don't have a picture of that here, but, you know, and you see the girls so focused on what is being taught to them. The idea is to help supplement their math, science, and things they learn in as part of normal curriculum, but it's not teaching them what they already learned. So, we partnered with a local educational institution, which had developed some supplementary education tools for kids. So, this is what we're trialing out. And the idea is that in two years from now, we hope to be able to measure what performance improvements has happened. But it's, again, trying to ensure that those girls have that greater opportunity which they don't have, because they need to go straight back to home and do whatever they need to do. But this gives them an opportunity to expand their learning a little bit. So, we do have a login to watch them do an instruction. Of course, it happens in, at Pakistan time, but if anyone's interested, we can share a login with you so you can see what's actually happening during one of these online classroom sessions. Next slide, please. Here's some pictures from some of the sites we've done. Kathy and I had the opportunity to visit one of our sites in India last year. So, let me talk about those two pictures on the right-hand side. So, there's Kathy on the top, and there's me at the bottom there. When the kids were told that, you know, these are the people who have brought you internet and the world of YouTube and Google and Facebook and all that, they went simply nuts. On the bottom picture, where you see me standing with the camera, you see the little kid with the red shirt running towards me? So, if there was another two or three frames later, what you would have seen is me nearly falling over because they were literally jumping on me. They were so excited that, you know, these guys are the ones who brought all this stuff to us, and how nice of them. Usually foreigners get nice treatments anyway, but we've got special nice treatment. And I know Kathy was surrounded for most of her walk around the village by these kids, you know. And the picture on the bottom left-hand side corner here, that's one of the classrooms where we've outfitted the school. And you see all those kids, and largely girls, as you can see, sitting very patiently, waiting for their turn at the computer. They get ten minutes during lunchtime each. They time each other. They get upset if the other one's taking eleven minutes, and there's a bit of tussle and hustle. But, you know, it was so nice to see that, you know, what does it mean for them, you know? And sometimes we, I think, in the world we live in and the work we do, we get a bit complacent and not realizing how something like that makes such a big difference at the most rural and remote places of the world. And of course, the same is all across the region. And of course, the same is all across the region. It's not just Asia, right? There are other regions in the world which have similar circumstances. So it's great to see. Very quickly, you see a little van in the middle picture there. That's our latest project. That is in a place called Kutch in Rajasthan, India, or in Gujarat, India, actually. So it's a desert area. That region produces, I think it's sixty or seventy percent of India's salt. So it's a salt mining area. The problem is the people who mine that salt, who have been doing it for hundreds of years, don't exist in the census. Okay, so for the Indian government, these people don't exist technically. They're a nomadic group. So when the rains come, the whole area floods and they move out. When the monsoon season is gone, they move back in to mine the salt. Because they're nomadic in that respect, the whole family moves with them when they go. And they now go from place to place in this big desert area to mine the salt and then move on to the next one and the next one and the next one. The kids don't have any education because they're just tagging along with their parents, filling the sacks with salt and whatever else they need to do. So with some of our local partners, and I actually read about this going on a plane and they talked about the beauty of Kutch. But right at the bottom of that article was this thing about, you know, that's the passing mention of these people who are nomadic and don't exist in the census. So I talked to a friend of mine and I said, let's find out more about these people. So our friend Osama got involved and we've ended up deploying a network there, but the network is in the van. So we drive the van around. You see a dish antenna on top of that van that is sitting on a camera tripod. Because, you know, we try and be frugal in how we do stuff. That camera tripod is then wander around to try and locate the signal because our back hole, you know, depending on where the van is, we've got to steer our antenna, right? And that's how we do it. So it's just using very, you know, whatever we could find locally to build it because it's also a desert and highly salt, salt, the climate is full of salt. So things start to grow very quickly. So that's an interesting project. It's just going to its final stages now and we hope to put out some literature on that early in the new year. So I'm sure that's something you, as the board, may very well want to talk about as you travel the world and do the things you do. And I know how we can make a difference in all sorts of conditions. Next slide please. Right, so I will now stop. Thank you for listening to me for a while and I will hand over to the youngest kid on the block.
Thank you Raj and thank you all of you for giving me the opportunity to speak. So in terms of the region, as Raj explained, it's really vast. We have so many islands that are literally disconnected from each other. And and the region is extremely diverse linguistically, culturally and ethnically. And and that brings a lot of challenges and a lot of new opportunities. Next slide please. One of the regions is the, one of the four regions in South Asia, where we have the majority of the chapters, eleven chapters and twenty thousand plus members. Out of them, thirteen thousand are part of the chapters. And and if you look at the internet penetration, it's really low, twenty eight percent and goes all the way down to eleven point seven percent in Afghanistan, to all the way higher to thirty eight point four percent. And that's really, really less in Bangladesh. And the mobile penetration, as you can see, in most of these regions, really high and it's one hundred percent in Sri Lanka. Next slide please. And the Southeast Asia, the population is six hundred and forty eight million and we have five chapters in the region. And as you can see, the internet penetration is really high in most of these places. And and the mobile, apart from the mobile penetration, the internet penetration is also really high. And the mobile penetration in the region is more than one hundred percent. Next slide please. Oceania is is one of the most challenging regions for us because most of these places are literally disconnected from each other. They have very unique cultures and everything and they all speak different languages. Also, some of the most, Papua Niggin, for example, has world's largest, most like distinct languages in the region. And and that kind of brings a lot of challenges. We have just one chapter for the Pacific Islands and one in Australia. So Australia kind of is is really taking up when it comes to the internet penetration. When the islands is really, really low. So the average might look really, really, really good, sixty eight percent. And the mobile penetration is one hundred percent. But when you look, when you take out Australia and New Zealand, it comes down to really, really less. Next slide please. And East Asia is again really challenging for us for us because we only have one chapter in Taiwan and we don't yet have any chapter in China. And the population is really high, one point six three billion. The internet penetration is also quite high and the mobile penetration in most regions are really, really high and mostly more than one hundred percent. And the average is is again really high, one hundred and thirty eight percent. Next slide please. And Afta would be speaking about the internet landscape.
Hello, everyone. I'm Afta Siddiqui. For those of you who are not familiar with me, first time meeting most of you. So thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. So just taking further to what Raj explained about the region. So I'll just talk about further the internet development in this region. So next slide please. As Raj explained, like two third of the, two third of the population of the world lives in this region and it's a vast region. So no wonder we have the problem of capacity. And that's why new submarine cables are coming in at quite rapid rate, rate. But the problem is still, like, capacity is the biggest issue. We have thirty percent growth in this region in terms of new submarine cables. And it is expected to grow up to forty percent in next five years. And there's been, there are some very interesting facts about this region. No wonder the the biggest region in terms of the capacity is still transatlantic. But the next is intra-Asia. It's not trans-Pacific. So most of the traffic is still remaining in in the Asia-Pacific region. And the biggest reason is that most of the biggest operators, the OTT operators, decided, well, it's it's a better idea to put their nodes in the region rather than going all the way to US. And that's why they are investing a lot in submarine cables in this region. So Google, Microsoft, Facebook, Amazon, all are putting their own submarine cables or part of the consortium. And it is growing with a very high rate. And another area where Pacific Islands are, will be benefited by this is like, because they were relying on satellite connection in the past and now the growth is showing some good results. They are putting more fiber cables, World Bank and ADB is also investing there. So next slide please. This is a very interesting slide. It's, so you can see, we still have a large population using 2G networks here. But the the trend is changing quite rapidly. So it's from 2G to 3G and then 4G. So if you if you focus on the headline heading at the moment, it's mobile first, mobile only region. As I said, that there are problems with the connectivity and the access technology. And that's what we saw in our surveys in in the last three, four years. Access is still a problem, but the mobile access is getting easier for the population and that's why they are relying on it. And and to support this, this argument that people are relying on the mobile only connectivity. If you all know what happened on eleventh of November in China, that was the single, single sale day in China. It started by Alibaba. And if you know the stats, they did twenty five point three billion sale in twenty four hours. Well, we all know about Alibaba, but on a sideline, what happened, there is another company called JD. So JD dot com did nineteen point five billion sale as well. So if you combine both and if you just, if you don't combine, if you keep Alibaba in context, it is more than the sale of combined sale of Black Friday, Cyber Sunday, Cyber Monday all around the world. So that is the amount of sales you can generate from one country. And it is still very specific, very concentrated in China. Most of the sales was inside China. Otherwise, two twenty five countries and territories were involved in the sales, but still people within the China were buying it. And just to, on a very unrelated note, just to throw an idea. So what people were buying in China from outside was a very different kind of stuff. They were buying multivitamins, they were buying baby food, they were buying baby pampers. So they were buying from China and this, all these stats were listed by Alibaba themselves. And from China, people were buying woolen clothing, sweaters, cardigans and mobile phones, of course. So and they did one point four eight billion transactions. That's the huge amount of transaction you can do in one day. That's again a world record by all standards. So this, this is the number of, this is, this is the capacity we are talking about in this region and it's only China. Next. So that was the connectivity and number of transaction. Now let's talk about the IPv6, which is quite dear to us and me for, for, for quite many years now. Not a very good number so far, but things are changing in our region. If you take, if you talk about the Asia, it's still, it's around fifteen percent, not more than that, but it's changing quite rapidly. As you can see, it's only two years graph. And in Oceania, it's because they have other issues at the moment. So they are still struggling with the IPv6 deployment. And if you can see the, next slide please. Yeah. So thanks to India and one of the operator in India that is Reliance Geo. They launched their services last year and they were IPv6 only. And they changed the course of whole Asia in just one go. So now India sits on, in the map all around the world, that's its own second number, right after Belgium. So they have the maximum number of IPv6 user in the whole world. And respect to the, with respect to the Asia, nobody else is doing a good job as India is doing. The next one is Japan, of course. They have a very steady growth and they are doing remarkably well all across the region. We have Thailand and Malaysia catching up. On the other side is Oceania. Even if you look at the Oceania map, Australia and New Zealand is green, but it is relative to the region. So if you look at the global map, Australia is still fifteen person and New Zealand is still less than fifteen person. But in the Oceania, because these are the two countries doing anything in IPv6, so that's why they are green. Next slide please. Can you go back to the previous one? Yeah, so just give you one more thing is to to cater this problem that the IPv6 deployment is very low in the region, we have conducted multiple IPv6 workshops. And as a result of that, it is still not quantifiable at the moment. But as a result of that, we have seen multiple operators deploying IPv6 in their core and into their access. And we have seen that trend all across the Asia-Pacific region. We conducted three workshops directly, we supported multiple five to six workshops indirectly. And we are focusing on the train, the trainer program because then you can quantify the numbers of workshop attendees and how it works out. Next please. So this is, this is the project we did in Asia-Pacific region. I'll explain this project first and then I'll give you an idea that why we did it. So it it maps all the existing IXP's in the region. So all the blue dots, all the blue markers are the existing IXP's in the region. So and on the right side, it gives you the name, the number of members and whether they are neutral or commercial. And of course, what is the bandwidth, what, what, how much bandwidth they are exchanging within the internet exchange? So this is, these are the blue lines, blue markers. The red markers are those places where we think there should be an IX. And why we think there should be an IX, it's on the basis of number of people living in that city or region. So in a very common sense, if there are one million people living in a city with a mobile penetration rate of seventy, eighty, ninety percent, I think it's not rocket science to believe that there should be an IX in that city. So we believe, we we only followed the population criteria and decided that we should have IXs in these places. And that's why we have so many red marks here. Next slide please. Okay, so why we did it? So there is, there's an organization called UN ASCAP. ASCAP is Economic and Social Commission for Asia-Pacific. This is a UN organization. Last year, they started an initiative called APIs, Asia-Pacific Information Superhighway. And as part of the APIs master plan, they had four pillars. So one was connectivity, second was traffic and network management, third was e-resiliency and fourth was broadband for all. As part of the second pillar, the main focus was the deployment of internet exchange point in the region. So the biggest issue was, okay, fine, that's your focus, but where should we deploy it? Right? So you need to map it. And so initially, we started using the existing maps because there are many maps available as we speak. But the problem we found with all the maps, the existing map, number one, the data was outdated. Number two, so they put everything they found on the internet. We said, there's an IX there. So he said, okay, fine, there's an IX here. You can't actually cross-check it if there is an IX. So we found so many false markers all across the map, which many websites believe there was an IX. So we said, okay, fine, if you cannot cross-check it, we won't consider it an IX. Second, there was no demarcation between commercial and neutral. From our perspective and from the United Nations ASCAP initiative perspective, they were looking at the neutral IXs only. We, well, commercial IX is an IX, but we were focusing on the neutral ones. So we decided to come up with this solution. We said, okay, fine, we will do it ourselves, right? And we will do it for the APIs and we will be able to map it all across the region and we'll give a picture. And the picture was not very nice. And people were surprised, even with the case of India where there's so many IXs. We realized, well, there are some more IXs are required. In Japan, we found out that they are all concentrated in most of the bigger cities like Tokyo, Nagoya, Osaka, and that's it. Australia and New Zealand, they were pretty much covered, but if you can see the map, if we think there are ten, there should be ten IXs and if they are less than ten, then it it gives you a heat map. And other than few countries, everything is is quite a rainbow color. So we need a lot of IXs in the region and now we will focus on those regions only. And now we have some markers and we have given the presentation to the chapters to verify all the data. So now we will verify everything from the ground level. Next slide please. So I'll hand it over to Noel.
Thanks, Afta. So when we talk about policy, internet policy in Asia-Pacific and policymaking and lawmaking in particular, we find that a lot of the countries do prioritize cybersecurity over other issues in the region. A lot of this has to do with issues around national sovereignty. Unfortunately, these issues, this motivation is also fueling internet surveillance in the region. This is especially true for the politically volatile areas. So in India, for instance, we see that a lot of the content blocking is happening in the northern part, the disputed areas with Pakistan. On the upside, we've also seen governments becoming more proactive in trying to narrow the national divide, sorry, the digital divide. This happens and this is occurring in different forms, whether incentivizing operators to roll out infrastructure through, say, refunds on their licensing fees or trying to get them to contribute to universal service fees or investing in it themselves with those sources that they have. So in the Philippines, for instance, where I come from, this year, yeah, this year we enacted a public Wi-Fi law. And currently in the Philippines, the chapter is also working on getting an open access bill passed in in Congress. A lot of the, the drivers for for getting the, getting people connected. I should actually talk about net neutrality first. So the issue of net neutrality has been particularly silent in recent years. Particularly due to the efforts to get people connected. So some of you may have been following the, the big issue in India last year where Facebook tried to roll out, or actually launched Free Basics, which gave people sites, access to some sites and some applications and some services, but not others. So what happened was So what happened was this caused quite a, like a massive uproar. There were a lot of protests, very public protests about it, which resulted in the regulator actually taking a formal stand in favor of net neutrality. At the moment, we are seeing that a lot of the countries in the region are focusing more and more on taxation, particularly of over the top players. Now, this is, this is, they're targeting the Facebooks and the Googles of the world. And of course, with the backing of the telco industry. Indonesia, for example, last year tried to do this by, there was a proposal to get these big companies to physically locate in Indonesia, just so they can extract some revenue from them. And some of the motivation from that comes from the need to roll out more infrastructure, the need to get more money in. So they can roll out more infrastructure for more internet infrastructure. So this, this renewed drive to get people online is all part of what we can say is there's a lot of excitement to build the digital economy in the region. And people, governments know that the pace by which, and the speed by which they can get the services rolled out and actually get people to adopt them is largely relies on how much local expertise they have on the ground, which means building people's digital skills, but also on how, how many people actually connected to the internet. It's we go to privacy and data protection. So as these services being put in place, this has been distributed, this, I'm going to talk about this later on. But this year, we launched a series of online privacy workshops. So we've done one in each subregion in Asia Pacific. And the objective for that really is to get a feel of what the local issues are and where we can come in. And just to get people together and try to discuss among themselves what they need to address at this moment and how other stakeholders can help. The next slide please. So just to give a bit of perspective of where we're heading in the region. This was a nice little figure released by McKinsey, I think a month ago, which showed that the center of economic gravity is going to shift back to Asia Pacific. This is not surprising at all because as Aftab has already mentioned, there's a lot of economic growth in, in a lot of, in a lot of, and a lot of the countries of the region. But also we have very, very big markets. So I think Southeast Asia alone is a market of 600 million people. So we're talking about big markets here. And next slide please. So these trends are also, we also see them as strengths and opportunities. We have a young and tech savvy population. We have governments that are now seeing more and more the linkage between the use of ICTs and social economic development. Now, what we're doing, one of the things that we're doing in this regard, I think Aftab already touched on that, is the Asia Pacific Information Superhighway. So we've been collaborating with UNSCAP. And the objective for this is really to ensure that infrastructure is rolled out throughout the region and that all of the member states have policies in place to enable this development. Next slide please. So one of the good results of having, of trying to enable, having, trying to create this, this ecosystem is the emergence of businesses, of local online businesses. Now, these businesses are becoming innovators in their own right. We see Grab, for instance. Grab famously, Grab is, for those who may not have encountered it, Grab is like the Uber of Southeast Asia. It's actually based in Singapore, no wrong? Oh, sorry. So Grab pioneered the motorbike service, is the car, the motorbike equivalent of the car. And that is because a lot of cities in Asia suffer from really, really bad traffic congestion. So I've done this once actually from my, my house to the airport on a work trip with my suitcase at the back. And then clinging to the guy as well, but it really gets you through the traffic. Otherwise, I would have never made it through the airport.
That's why it's called Grab.
But, um, but yeah, so I actually abandoned my Uber and got on the Grab bike just so I could get to the airport. Because another, I would say, challenge of, of people living in Asia Pacific, especially in developing countries is we don't have a very good public transport system. Except Singapore and Tokyo, Tokyo, I would say Japan is very, very good. Flip card, another example pioneered the cash on delivery service. So the majority of consumers in Asia Pacific don't have a credit card. And another company that has tried, or another service that has tried to address, another aspect of that is EasyPaisa. So EasyPaisa is now the third largest mobile banking system in the world. So it was pioneered by Telenor in Pakistan, where in, in a lot of developing countries as well in Asia Pacific, you see that the majority of the population is unbanked. So it answers a very, very salient need. So just to point out that these businesses, actually a lot, their success, a lot of their success can be attributed to mobile. So I don't think a lot of these businesses would have been possible without mobile. Next slide please. Also, another facet of the success of these businesses is that they actually try and answer a particular need within their communities, within the country or within the region itself. What we try to do, I mean, we're quite a small team, but what we try to do, what we've tried to do in the last year and a half anyway, is to try and facilitate and see what the real issues are, what the specific issues are. And we've tried to do that through the, the issue papers. So we've released 15 so far. And these papers have been cited in numerous meetings, ITU meetings, not by us, but by other people. But as you can see, it's, it's quite, it's quite a range of issues. But what, what makes them particularly relevant is that they, they give a, it's not an overview. It's actually very specific and very concrete. And also not just what the issues are, but what are the good practices that are existing in the region that can be adopted, that can be replicated in other parts of the region, but also quite concrete guidelines for policymakers and how they can move forward with this. And I think this would be a good time to actually transition to Navid, who will be talking about what we, the other things that we do. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Noel. Hi everyone, and Swadikap from Bangkok. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
So next slide please. Thank you very much for this opportunity. And thanks to the internet, there are no more spaces left and you can speak from wherever you want to in any part of the world. So as you have been hearing from my colleagues, that Asia Pacific is a diverse region, a very big course. And we operate having a very small team. Our work strategy in Asia Pacific revolves around the three Cs, as we call it, collaboration, coordination and cooperation. Next slide please. So our, our main work focus revolves around the building capacity for developing countries, which is a big need from the community, enhancing the security and stability of the internet, raising awareness, advocating for an open and accessible internet, supporting the open standards, facilitating multi-stakeholder dialogue and collaborating with our partners. Now, within Asia Pacific, over the year, we've been able to build and strengthen our relationship with key internet organizations. Some of them are listed on this slide. Relationship building in Asia Pacific takes a lot of time actually. But once you reach to that level of trust, you can really make a lot of impact. And I'm happy to share that these organizations consider internet society as a trusted partner now. So for example, they're not only invite us to share our opinion during their events and conferences, but now we also have that status where they approach us and consult us for their work programs, plans and future strategy. This year, Asia Pacific Telecommunity, which is the regional arm for ITU in Asia Pacific, approached us in drafting their next three years work plan, the strategy of 2018 to 2020. And again, I'm happy to share that trust is now listed as one of their key work pillars for the next three years. So that's, that's, that's kind of an impact that we were able to make through our relationship building in Asia Pacific. Last year, ASCAP, as Aftab was mentioning in, during his talk, accepted our offer to host the Regional Internet and Development Dialogue in Bangkok. And I think this was a very rare occasion where a UN agency accepted and hosted a regional conference for an external organization. Some other organizations, as you can see, the ITU Regional Office, they approach us and GSMA, we do regular events and speaking with them, APTLT, which is Asia Pacific, top level domain organization, APRCOT, Asian Development Bank, APRIGF. And apart from these organizations, we also work closely with some commercial multinationals and some nonprofit organizations in the region like APC and Tel
Can, can you hear us at least? Because your, your video froze.
Hello?
Okay, you're back. Okay. So you just disconnected, okay? Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear. Sorry, I don't know at what point I've got freeze.
Like half an hour ago. No, it was just a few seconds, so.
Okay, so, so this slide I was, was telling about some of the relationships and, and, and partnership that we have developed in Asia Pacific. And I was saying that in addition to these organizations, we also work closely with some of the commercial organizations like Telenor and some regional civil society organizations like APC. Next slide please. Okay, so this slide and next slide, I'll, I'll, I'll talk about our work priorities now. When we define our work priorities in Asia Pacific, of course, we consider the organizational priorities of internet society. But what we also do is that we all preach to our community and we try to gauge their pulse and take their advice on what should be the things that we should be doing. Now, this really helps us to answer why we do what we do in Asia Pacific. So the Regional Internet Policy Survey, as Raj mentioned in the initial slide, is one of those key tools that we use in Asia Pacific to take advice from our community that includes our members, our chapters and also external partners to see what should be our work priorities in Asia Pacific. Over the past few years, access and trust have been listed and advised by our community as, as the key priority. And that very much resonates with our all work priorities of the internet society. Now, within access, some of the key highlights this year and some of the previous year have been community networks. Raj mentioned about Wireless World Community. And within the Wireless World Community, there is, we were able to pilot our Rural Innovation Lab in Nepal. I think that was also something that I would like to highlight. With that really captured a lot of attention within the villagers in, in, in the remote side of Nepal. This year, we have started this regional event, which we call Community Network Exchange Asia Pacific. Now, these community networks are getting popular around the region. So we, with our partner in India, the Digital Empowerment Foundation, have pioneered this regional conference to bring people from all sides of Asia Pacific and discuss and exchange knowledge and expertise around community networks. Over the past 18 months or so, we've been working on digital accessibility. And I'm happy to share that probably we are also a pioneer organization to, to discuss the angle of the developers, the people who design and develop softwares and mobile application. So we were able to bring them on stage together with the person with disabilities. And that was also our unique approach that we didn't approach to the experts, but rather we invited the person with disabilities, visually impaired person, persons with hearing impairment, cognitive impairment and physical impairment to sit on the stage and join us as speaker, telling us what are the challenges and issues that they face when they go online. Now, there have been a lot of success stories around it. There have been some emotional stories as well. I think we were very fortunate, you know, to work with, with internet society, which gave us an opportunity to, you know, to work with people with disabilities. Some of the impact that we were able to make, for example, in Pakistan, the government of Pakistan, for the first time in the history, has included a special chapter addressing the needs of persons with disabilities in the upcoming IT policy. So I think that's a big landmark for the people in Pakistan, especially the person with disabilities. We at the moment are developing a toolkit that will include some of the actions that could be considered by the developers and also by the policymakers in Asia Pacific and beyond. We do technical outreach, supporting the, the network operator groups. And within this technical outreach, gender is one of our main emphasis. Now, almost 48% of the population in Asia Pacific are women. And unfortunately, in some and many parts of Asia Pacific, they don't get that opportunity to, to come on a global or regional stage and build up their capacity. So that was something that we have given a key focus, bringing a woman into the technical discussions and the technical regional forums like APRCOT. This year, we've been able to support more than 70 people as part of different fellowships. That includes SANOC, which is the South Asian Network Operator Group, and APRCOT, which is the biggest technical forum for Asia Pacific. We are also working on leadership development, providing online training, especially on internet governance. That is something that we do in collaboration with our internet leadership team, since we have inforum, which is our online platform. So we provide a course, five, five weeks course to fellows to the Regional Internet Governance Forum. And also APGA, which is the Asia Pacific Internet Governance Academy, an event that happens in South Korea. We advocate for policy and principles through some of the work, for example, the issue papers, some of the studies that we've been doing and also through our speaking and country engagement. Now, when you talk about country engagement, I'll just like to highlight the work that we did back in 2015 in Nepal, when the country had, was hit by a massive earthquake. Together with our chapter, we were able to provide a lot of support to the, to the community in the affected areas. We were also the first organization to hold a post-earthquake dialogue, inviting all different stakeholders, not only within Nepal, but across Asia Pacific to discuss the disaster management and recovery situation and what is needed to be done in future. And I remember last year when I was speaking at one of the APT forums on disaster management, a person who was working, who's working with the Ministry of Communications in, in Nepal, actually just raised his hand. And once he got the microphone, he was saying that he is very thankful to internet society on the work that they did and, and the way they arranged that dialogue in Kathmandu after the earthquake. Next slide please. Oh, I just missed this last point about the Internet Governance Forum, the National IGF and the School on Internet Governance that we support. Now, as Raj said, most of our work includes chapters as, as in February part. In South Asia alone, there are five schools on internet governance that just happened in the last two years. And all five of them are actually led by our chapter. And all five of them are actually led by our chapters. So that's a big impact that goes through our chapters back to the community when we discuss about the situation and the position of internet governance discussions in Asia Pacific. We also support the Regional Asia Pacific Internet Governance Forum. And in that as well, we are giving a lot of emphasis to embrace the diversity, especially through giving opportunity to women and girls to get participation and say out their opinion on internet governance in these schools and regional forums. Next slide please. Now, under trust, this year, PBC has been our main focus area. We did sub-regional workshops in all the four subregions in Asia Pacific to gather the views and best practices around PBC. And this, these all workshops actually helped us to gather a lot of insights on the stage of PBC from the different sub-regional angle. And in Singapore, yes, two days ago, we did, we just tried to conclude all those.
You froze again. Is the sound okay at least? Okay, can you hear us? Okay, maybe. Yes?
Yes, I'm back. I think there is someone outside my door with a stopwatch, you know, every fifteen minutes I get freeze.
Okay, wow, okay, now it works again, so please.
So I should, I should, I should try to finish my, my. Before I get freeze again. Okay, so I was talking about the online PBC workshops, and I was thinking that Noel and Raj probably can share more details on that. The Asian Internet Symposium is one of our flagship event that we do in Asia Pacific. It's something, it's not a whole day conference, a half-day conference, talking on a topical issues, which is aligned with the local needs of the country. Most of these symposiums are hosted by our chapters. This year, we did one in Vietnam, in fact, that was our first event in Vietnam. And it was not easy to actually, you know, it took us some time to build the relationship and I'm happy that we were able to do this event around cybersecurity, which is kind of a sensitive issue in terms of Vietnam. But the government was our partner, we had the Vietnam Internet Association as a partner. We were featured in their national television as well, and some of the colleagues during that event told us that this is the first time that such kind of discussions and dialogues have been arranged in Vietnam. The collaborative approach towards security, our collaborative security framework led by our technology teams, we advocate and promote it within the region. Manners, of course, is one of those initiatives where we're trying to get more operators and the regional internet industry get involved in this initiative. We also try to approach to the industry, the government, and the regional policy forums whenever we get a chance to have a speaking slot. And last but not the least, we carry on a lot of stakeholder engagement, including the government, trying to, you know, advocate and emphasize on the need of the sheer responsibility and of course advocating around our three C mantra, which is coordination, collaboration and cooperation. One of the thing that we were able to pull in Pakistan, if I remember, was that we organized an INET to November two thousand sixteen. And as a result of that discussion that we were able to hold in the presence of stakeholders in Pakistan, the government of Pakistan actually formulated our policy to enhance the cross-border connectivity. So on one side of Pakistan is Afghanistan and on the other side is India. And there were a lot of problems faced in terms of connectivity when the local operators were trying to exchange their traffic and set up their fiber network. But because of that dialogue that we were able to organize, there was a policy launched earlier this year by the government and the industry is very happy. Next slide please. So some of sampling of our activities, particularly this year, next slide please. IETF awareness, now in Asia Pacific, most of you might know Japan and China are the two main leaders in terms of developing open standards. And we realized that there is a lot of need to outreach to our community in the other subregions in Asia Pacific and try to promote the young internet engineers, the students, to know about IETF and start advising or start working on internet drafts. Last year, we did sixteen workshops with more than thousand participants in Indonesia, Philippines and Singapore, which is the Southeast Asia. And this year, we have carried out similar exercise in South Asia, in Sri Lanka, Bangladesh and Pakistan. So far, there have been three internet drafts which have been produced because of this outreach program in Asia Pacific. And two of the fellows, one from Bangladesh and one from Pakistan, were actually at the IETF Singapore through their fellowship that they got through this program. Regional Accessibility Workshop, this year we did in Indonesia and Sri Lanka with our partners, chapters and government agency. In Sri Lanka, we had the Secretary of the Ministry of Digital Sri Lanka and IT. And at the end of the workshop, he actually offered our chapter to work with the government to make all the government websites in Sri Lanka accessible for the person with disabilities. In Indonesia, just last month, with this workshop, again, inviting industry and government and person with disabilities and software developers. And we were told that such kind of dialogues have never happened in Jakarta. And again, there were a lot of emotional things happening when I was talking with the person with visual impairment, hearing impairment. But they were all very happy. And out of that workshop, this is what I have learned. So if you want to clap, people who are mute and who cannot speak, this is actually their sign language for a clap. We moderated the IT course, the one that I was telling earlier to the inforum for the APRIGF and APGA, we had sixty-plus participants from twenty-plus countries during these courses. And the PBC workshop that I just mentioned in my previous slide, we did in India, Philippines, Singapore and Vanuatu this year with partners included in National PBC Authorities Media, Chapter, Government Agencies, et cetera, et cetera. Below in this slide, you can see some of the photographs of some of the work that we have done this year. And with this, I'll pass it on to Rajnish. Oh, I still have one more slide, sorry. Mapping Online Child Protection, so this is one of the work that we've done over the past sixteen months or so. It includes best practices across eleven economies in Asia Pacific. Just two days ago, I had a discussion with ITU and I was told that ITU is working with ASEAN government, the Southeast Asian governments, to come up with a regional framework and also the national framework on child on protection. So ITU was curious, if we have done something on this topic, and when I shared that we have done the study, mapping eleven economies, ITU has offered us to work with them both on the national level and also to partner on setting up a regional framework for child on protection in Southeast Asia, which is supposed to happen next year. We have partnered with apnic dot Asian ICANN to form APEC Alliance for Schools and Academies of Internet Governance, we call it A-PASSA. And the basic purpose was to streamline funding, because usually, a community from all across Asia Pacific approaches to us, they approach to APNIC, they approach to ICANN and to dot Asia separately, to seek funding, to seek speaking engagements, support, et cetera, et cetera. So this year, we have formed this regional alliance, so we can streamline our funding and we can optimize our resources to the internet governance schools and dialogues in Asia Pacific. The IXP Mapping Project, which Afzal has informed about, this year, we have helped Pakistan and Papua New Guinea to set up a neutral IXP, which has followed up with the IXP Mapping Project. And I think this was my last slide, over to you, Rajnish, and again, thank you very much, everyone, for this opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Navid. So during the beginning, if you all recall, I mentioned about how we have these cultural nuances in the region, right? And the South Asians in particular are very renowned for something. When they start talking, they don't stop. So I told Navid he had fifteen minutes to do this, he's taken half an hour. So if I had told him half an hour, it would have taken an hour. So you see how the things I have to deal with in this region, right? So as you can see, you know, we've done quite a bit of work this year. You know, we could spend the whole week, if you wanted, talking about what we've done and what new things we would like to do, of course. We look forward to the board's support in making it all that happen in the next few days, so that we can do some great stuff next year. Sorry, previous slide, sorry. So just a very quick snapshot, just to give you an idea of what the year looked for us thus far. We've been active in twenty-five economies, that means we've physically visited twenty-five countries in the region to do stuff. The stuff could be a whole bunch of things, projects on the ground, speaking engagements, et cetera, et cetera. We've had fifty, what I would call high-level speaking engagements. If I counted all the speaking engagements we had, it would be closer to two hundred. There are thirty events and activities we have directly done. Directly means, you know, it's using ISOC resources in partnership, obviously sometimes, but these are direct involvements. If I counted the non-direct involvements, that number goes up to over a hundred. The three thousand people we've trained in some way or form throughout the course of the year, be it technical training, be it policy-based training, internet schools of governance, et cetera, et cetera. So as you can see, and again, I just want to point out, there's only five of us, four of us and him, who's on the screen there. So this is more message to my boss rather than, you know, in front of her bosses. So, but you know, as I said earlier, I'm proud of this team. The reason we can do all this is because this team works together, you know, they take responsibility and they just go on, go ahead and do things, you know, they don't question, they say, we just got to do stuff. Next slide please. This should make James happy from the comms perspective. Media is a very key part of what we do. As you can see from those logos, we've been in just about every major publication in this region this year. So Banker Post, which is a very famous newspaper in the region, The Straight Times here in Singapore, of course. And interestingly enough, this year, we've made the news in China very, very often. I think, if I remember correctly, we had thirty odd different pieces in China alone this year, from the stuff we did. Kathy and I were in China earlier this year, of course, at MWC Shanghai. With IDG, they like us so much, they've actually signed an MOU with us to cross-promote our events and all that, for no money, of course. It's just an agreement we have with IDG, South Asia. You know, we are on online platforms, we're on TV, Navid mentioned he was in TV in Vietnam. Apparently, that was like a ten-minute segment he was on TV. He had no idea what they were talking about, but they kept him flashing his picture and taking his interview. So God knows what he said and what the interpreter that is, but he was on national TV in Vietnam, so. And I know a lot of bloggers cover us quite a bit. So, and then I just want to stress the fact that, you know, media think we can work better with media. It can be a really important partner for us. And, you know, cultivating the relationship is very important as well now. We know we've gone out and reached out to the media, but now what we're seeing is they keep on reaching back to us as well, asking us for commentary, asking us for positions. Of course, we don't always engage depending on what the topics are and, you know, where we stand on those things. But, you know, I think this is healthy. This slide for me is a healthy indication of ISOC's visibility, which is increasing in the region. And due to these articles, you know, other people start contacting us, you know, which is what really the end game is for us, right? Next slide please. Please keep in touch with us, we are your Asia Pacific team. Website, Twitter, email address. We do two other things in the region which you might find of interest. So on the bottom left-hand side is a Scoopit page that we curate. So here, we, you know, very selectively take issues and things that are happening in the region which have been published by media and we highlight it here. And we know there's quite a few subscribers to that page, because they keep on telling us that, you know, you haven't updated, you haven't posted anything last week, so it keeps us on our toes as well. So if you want a quick snapshot of what's happening in Asia across the region, please visit our Scoopit page. We have a regional newsletter that goes out, and I must thank Jim for pointing it out at the OMEC meeting, that, you know, he said, it is a good newsletter, so. I'd invite you to have a look at that. We run an event section in that newsletter, which people find very, very useful. And as I said, at the OMEC meeting, we have certain governments and governmental organizations in the region which rely on our newsletter to promote their events. And if it's missing, they get quite upset about it. We do have a chapter piece in every newsletter, so there's a chapter spotlight, there is an editorial that either me or one of the team does. There's a couple of guest articles. And of course, if you'd like to contribute a guest article, we'd be very, very happy to have something for you. I think Harish has done one in the past, prior to being on the board, I think. So please, we really welcome contributions from your perspectives on that. Next slide please. So what does the internet mean to APEC? Big question, huh? So there's a video that we have, a very short video, if we could queue that up, please.
Internet actually is kind of everything for me these days, because I, I mean, the office work that I do, I use internet. I have personal thing, information, getting the news, entertainment, almost everything is through internet.
Online.
tak pergi jumpa saya boleh beli secara online.
Amin, internet di oni kichu sih, internet amay tijak.
Internet mirel yee ek asa bank hai jisme, makiwak bi jaake apni mati ki maklumat debet kar sakta hu, or ye credit bi ki ja sakhti hai iske andar. Or sabse badi baat ye ke mae internet ko information or entertainment tonoma kasat kiri use kar nu.
Internet le to mola dere, meru life ma pariwara le asa, internet le communication, ideas or share konno le, meru afro professor, meru peti go, pari pari, shoboi kurama internet noe baga, sa'na internet baga meru zivun kolbuna bana bayre kurasa.
Sabda internet, itele, bayna tata para malani rugutara guna gunan pa.
Because of the internet, minak, nawakorakpa kun, itmabulep, narapusa.
So I thought that would be a nice way to end our presentation. We went out to the community for this, so a lot of our chapters helped us with that. Some of you may have recognized some of the faces in those videos, so there's some people from our chapter community. There's also the Pakistan regulator, the chairman of the regulator. There's also a guy who's worth over a hundred million dollars who spoke for us there, so it's a spectrum of people, nurses, teachers, doctors, kids. And we all, we asked them to speak in the local languages, just to also give an idea of how diverse the region is. So have you found that useful? This little picture you see here with that big smile on that kid, this is, I think, one of my favorite pictures of recent times. That is our site, I was talking about that site where we run the van around the desert, so it's one of the kids from that nomadic community. And when that picture was sent to me, you know, just the look on his face, he'd just been given a tablet with a video on it, and that was his reaction. And luckily, there was a cameraman there who captured that picture, you know. And that, just that big smile on his face, you know, something about that that really touches me, so. So this is why we do what we do. Thank you.
Thanks, and I mean, just, we were commenting that it's nice that, you know, all the whole, I mean, we got to hear the whole team, so you know, what you guys are doing in your respective sub areas, so that was actually very nice. We have time for a couple of questions, if any trustees want or comments. Hans Peter.
It's more a comment than a question. When I met Raj roughly nine and a half years ago, I was wondering how can one single man manage to cover such a huge region like your region is now? Now with your team, I understand it a little bit more, but I still can only say thank you, and I admire your work in this region, making so many good things, and I think it's great. Thank you.
We'll, we'll try to get him an extra person, you know, to, to work with the team. Hiroshi.
This is technical thing, you're getting your data showing us the infrastructure part. Not only about internet exchange, the recent, you know, advanced economical country including Singapore or Tokyo or Beijing is going to change from the IXP to private peering, as well as the interaction or interconnecting among the data centers. So that kind of, you know, research would be very important because of the change of the anthropology of the internet itself from the viewpoint of, you know, digital economy. The key person now, for example, in Japan, is not the IXP, but a, you know, neutral data center providing the private peering. So that will not be defencing into your, you know, numbers or figures. Of course, the, you know, under the developing country, emerging country is based on you using effectively the IXP, of course, as the very beginning. Though once the economy going to close up, then a lot of data centers are going to come out, and that kind of thing you should, you know, think about.
Thank you, Hiroshi, for pointing it out. I'm absolutely correct, and the thing is, there is no concept of neutral data center in most of the countries in, in our region. But it is changing. I live in Australia and it's, it's a completely different landscape. Things are moving in Singapore and Japan and Hong Kong as well. But the thing is, we strongly believe that where there is no concept of neutral data center, IXP is a starting point. And the neutral point where you can say, well, if the neutral IXP can work, neutral data center can work as well. And then the next step comes in with the interconnectivity of the data centers. So yeah, absolutely right, and we, we have that thing in our radar. So yeah, thank you for highlighting that.
Gaffey.
So I want to congratulate you all. You're a small but mighty team, and I'm very impressed at how sophisticated you are in the understanding both of the technology, the area, and then the policy concerns, which are global in nature, but you do a very terrific job of understanding how they play out in this region. You can also help us with how, really, I believe Asia, frankly, what's going on here is about to change the rest of the world. You are the engine for growth right now in the world. The sophistication that you all demonstrate with respect to using the technology, understanding the policy concerns, and actually coming up with some ways to address them is actually quite impressive. And I think we want to make sure that we use your strength for the rest of our staff as well. So really, that was a terrific job, there was a lot of material, but you demonstrated a real understanding of what's happening, so congratulations, congratulations to you, Raj.
Harish.
I just want to record my thanks to, you know, Raj and team for doing an awesome job. And I do engage with, with them every now and then. I just want to also probably ask the question which, you know, it could be the big elephant in the room, that of China. Although you did put them as a population, as part of APEC, but we don't have much really in terms of ability to engage with them yet. I guess this is something that we need to keep in mind, and with all the changes that's happening at the, the leadership level, how would that impact us as a organization and stuff like that, and how we can engage with the local Chinese internet users and so on? Thanks.
So our approach, I mean, I don't think, I don't need to get into the reasons behind, I think you're all very well versed with the history and all that. So our approach to China has been that, you know, we can not engage, so we need to engage. You know, I mentioned Kathy and I were barely this year, and we spent a lot of time engaging with not just the internet community as it were, but people, I mean, you know, walking the halls, talking to media, so many media interviews, you know. A lot of those stats are quoted about we were in the media so much. And the interesting thing was, you know, what they wanted to talk to us about, okay, there were some sensitive issues, but there was also a lot about innovation, about growth, where is the digital economy heading? So I think, you know, our approach thus far has been to have that soft engagement. We have organizational members in China as well that we work very closely with, Huawei is one, and in fact, I had a great conversation yesterday with, the day before yesterday, with our friend from Huawei who was here at the IETF meeting. And then there's of course, Yannick, whom, with whom we've done many things in the past. You know, we did a rural connectivity project outside Beijing many years ago. We wanted to do another one this year, but the government has changed the rules, and now foreign organizations cannot do projects in China. The money cannot come from outside. And I know, we had the school identified, the equipment identified, and at the last moment, their ministry said, but hang on, that's a foreign entity, sorry, cannot. So, so there are those sort of challenges we also have to deal with. There has always been interest to have chapters in China. As you know, the Internet Society of China is quite strong, quite visible, and over time they've also evolved in what they do and understanding they have in the community. So what we have been doing right now, we have a very close relationship, in fact, I nearly get an email every week from someone at the Internet Society of China about something or other. So that, in the background, I think we are continuing that engagement. Now, how visibly and publicly we can engage, I mean, that's something perhaps we should consider and we can talk about, but rest assured that, you know, we are engaging, it's not that we are not engaging, but, you know, in, in the form and manner that, you know, that works for us at the moment. But I'd be happy to have another discussion.
So Harish, we've had about a two-year, we're kind of in a second year plan for engagement. Olof's been, I think, twice at, we started on sort of a technical, technical level to talk with some of the higher level. Raj has been there all along in the team, but it's been very purposefully low-key, but I think we all think that it's, we got to up our game. We're just not sure what that ought to look like, and this is really a conversation that I think should even get to the board level. Because once we go, once we make some sort of overture, there, there will be a reaction and we have to be ready for what that means and where we want to go with it.
I understood Raoul had a question. Raoul, do you have a question?
Yes, it's more a comment than a question. That's, first of all, I would like to thank again the board for the opportunity to present our regional work in, in your different meetings. This is very useful, has been a change that, that we value very much. Also to say that the, related with what Hans Peter already said, this is a huge region, is really impressive, the work that our team is doing there. I have been with our Asian team in Asia many times, and I have experienced in firsthand the, the reputation and the influence of our team, the recognition from the community. The, we have a seat in the Information Superhighway Committee also. Raj is chairing currently the Asia-Pacific Regional IGF, and those are just proofs of the, of this recognition. The partnerships that they have built with the UNSCAP are really very, very important. And UNSCAP was the host of our regional dialogue on internet and development last year in Thailand. So those are just some examples of the, of the recognition of internet society in the, in the region, such huge region that we have been serving with a very small team. We have strengthened already the team this year, and based it on the, hopefully, if you approve the, the work plan for 2018, we, we plan to open two more positions in the region in 2018. And we also have the intention to open an extra position in 2019, what will permit us to work even better in the, in the region. But the work that has been so far is, is impressive, and I am so proud of the, of this, of this group of people, our APEC bureau. Thank you.
Thank you, Raoul. Okay, and, yeah, I mean, at that point, that, that conversation will come to the board and, and yeah. But our intention, as I said before, is clearly to, to empower the, the regions and provide more resources, so, yeah. With, with respect to how much, I mean, that's, that's something we need to discuss, but, but definitely, I mean, that, that's something that is on, on our, on our table right now. Yeah. Okay, we need to, to wrap up. One last question, actually, because we are, we are, I mean, at the same time as we give more power to the, to the regions, we were wondering, you know, how much, right now, you have this cross-communication between regions? So are you sharing best practices or you seldom talk to each other? What is the current situation?
So we have, so the regional bureau directors, Salam being the newest addition, so she, she's very new, of course, but the rest of us have been with ISO for a number of years. So there was Dowd first, then Sebastian came, then Frederick sort of in a different role, then I came on board. So, you know, we have this understanding between us, which I think is very strong. Now, if you're saying, do we get into a room every quarter or something and talk? No, we don't, because we use the internet to do that instead. So as an example, for this week, I've had two of my regional bureau colleagues communicating over Signal, because one prefers Signal and the other prefers WhatsApp, and I seem to be the guy in between, on, on issues and things. So that collaboration does exist, but it may not be in, in a manner you expected, that you know, we meet physically, I just don't have the time, this is too much happening. There's a lot of stuff that happens, an email, obviously, and there's also what I would call bilateral collaboration between regions. For example, Europe and we do a lot of things, Frederick was over in the region, in fact, he attended the Singapore Chapter AGM as well, where we're talking about GDPR things as part of the consultation. You know, the, with Sebastian in lack, you know, the Caribbean and the Pacific have a lot of commonalities, so we've had many discussions on that with his team as well. And then, of course, with APEC Tel, for example, which is based out of Singapore, but of course, it's the Pacific Rim, there's a lot of cross-collaboration that does happen. And of course, the Community Networking Project, it was born in Asia, now it's global for ISO. So yes, we do have collaboration, and I'd like to see what more we can do.
And we're moving toward this campaign thing, so, Mister, you're in charge of that with your buddies, so I think that's the push, right? So they've taken over the leadership of that entire thing with Raj as leading, with Sally, and then with each of the regional directors as head of one of those campaigns. So I think you're going to see more and more and more of it.
And we're seeing that changing already with, with our campaign planning at the moment, that's coming through right now.
Okay, okay, so, eh, thanks, guys, that was very, very interesting. Okay, so I was sending emails about, you know, what to do today before wrapping up, so we're going to take point twenty-one in, in the agenda, which is the brief report of the PIR NOMCOM, so Harish is going to give a quick update. So Harish.
Twenty, I think it was twenty-one, but I may be wrong, or at least my agenda, it's twenty-three, yes? Yeah.
So, thanks Gonzalo for that. Very quickly, we have, as you have, as we have gone through the meeting with PR this, earlier this morning, the issue of the NOMCOM for getting their new Board of Directors, as well as the skill sets and the kind of requirements that they, they need. One, that's one of the things that I have already discussed with the PR NOMCOM individuals, let me get the names correct, is Lisa and Tosca. So they would be sending me information regarding the work that they have already done or undertaken before Eric left, in terms of the skill sets, the kind of areas that they need help within the board to make sure that they can do a good job, as well as other kinds of criteria that they were looking at. So he, they promised to give it to me by end of next week. So that's the first thing. The second thing from there is, that, that gives me a starting point, but I think more importantly, if we want to make them successful, we need to make sure that we get more than just that gap analysis, what other things they need, and what else can we help them to move this thing forward. So I'm trying to, once I get that, in addition to the being on the PR committee, a NOMCOM from, from us, to see what we need to do to build up that capacity for them, and I want to try and get this kicked off in early January to move forward. So that's basically the update I have right now.
Okay, thank you very much, Harish. Any questions for Harish? By the way, Harish is obviously the, the chairman of the, of the committee.
Just as a comment, we sketched out some dates when we met the other day, which, which I presume we will send around shortly.
Yeah, that's right, thank you, thanks, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, excellent, thank you. So, so that basically, because we agreed not to do any more agenda topics for today, so we're going to close the public part of the meeting, and we will be moving into executive session for ten minutes so that we prepare for tomorrow and everybody understands, oh, your homework for the evening and, and everything.